Welcome, everyone. Today is Thursday, May 26th, and this is the Arlington School Committee. Before we begin, I'd like to introduce a moment of silence for John Bean, who recently died. Mr. Bean retired from Arlington after serving for many years as a director of Public Works in Arlington, and I've heard many people talk about stories about him, that he was a strong presence in town. He was a dedicated public servant who cared deeply about his work in Arlington. Our condolences to his family. A moment of silence, please. Okay. So before, first, we're going to go talk about the artwork, and then we'll move on to public participation. So, turn now out of water. So, starting from this side, and I have to tell you, these are pictures, so you don't see sort of the full beauty of the three-dimensional form. We have ceramic sculpture from grade five. Fifth-grade students first discussed the concept of the enchanted forest as a fictitious landscape that often featured in old stories, particularly fairy tales, and how such stories contain elements of magic and transformation. Students were then shown several examples of the work of contemporary glass artist Dale Chuhuli and discuss the abstracted botanical quality of his work. Chuhuli creates pieces that are often derived inspiration from nature while representing forms that are at once alien yet familiar. Students were instructed to plan and design a clay sculpture that could connote the idea of some form of plant life under an enchanted transformation. Sculptures were constructed from fired pottery clay and later glazed. But students were also encouraged to plan for incorporating additional materials to include later, once all previous steps were completed. And in that section two, in a smaller subsection, is grade-one paper sculptures. Students in grade one were shown several examples of contemporary sculpture inspired by nature. They discussed the artist's choice of materials as well as form, use of form and scale, to create something that did not mimic nature, but rather suggested its influence and allowed the viewer to impart their own interpretation. Students discussed the concept of the enchanted forest as a fictitious landscape often featured in old stories. They were instructed in basic principles of paper sculpture and manipulation of a variety of materials used to suggest the idea of an enchanted toadstool, a common resident of the damp forest. So that is over there. So these are toadstools. Moving on to here, grade-two fairy village. Students were guided through a discussion about the element of form and how it differs from the element of shape. They were then shown and asked to identify examples of three-dimensional geometric forms, and they discussed how these forms can be seen and recognized in examples of sculpture. They then discussed the concept of the enchanted forest as a fictitious landscape, and they were shown illustrations of several examples of different fairies, such as the pixie, from the book Fairies by Brian Frond and Alan Lee, and they were led to notice how different in appearance each of these creatures were, and asked to consider what kind of house such a fairy might live in. They then created their own houses from fired clay, were required to consider style of the house, and to construct it from hollow geometric forms. They were then painted with watercolor paint and embellished with natural materials of the students' choosing. Okay, moving on back, that's a three-dimensional sort of paper sculpture. Students were introduced, this is a third grade, mythical menagerie. Students were introduced to this lesson with a discussion about the sculptures of famous hybrid animals, such as the great sinks of Giza in Giza, Egypt. People have heard legendary stories about magical combinations of animals since the ancient times, and such mythical creatures continue to inspire writers and artists today. They then discussed the concept of the enchanted forest, and they were instructed to create a hybrid animal of their own, designed from construction paper using basic collage principles. In addition, students were instructed to include pop-up elements to create the illusion of background, middle ground and foreground more effectively. They were encouraged to consider what they felt would be an interesting or appropriate environment for their animal to live, and whether it be a realistic or an enchanted habitat. Moving on to this large-scale thing, grade-four, this is a fairy tale silhouette, large-scale paper wall murals. Student began this lesson with a discussion of what the enchanted forest is. They were then compared two very different artist interpretations of the enchanted forest, one pleasant and delightful, the other mysterious and foreboding. They were then given a brief history of the artist's silhouettes, which originated as an 18th-century paper craft, and shown how artists of all eras have since adopted the art form in a variety of media. They were then assigned to groups and instructed to work as a team to construct a large-scale wall mural depicting a scene of the fairy tale and/or capturing the mood and essence of an enchanted forest. Each team member was required to contribute at least one element within the piece because the forest plays a key role. Each mural was required to include at least one tree. So that was cool. And over here, kindergarten, bewitched butterflies, mixed-media collage. Kindergarten students were first shown the work of found-object sculpture Melissa Stipe's line, whose large-scale butterfly sculptures defy expectations with their size and materials. Students were quick to notice the intricate butterfly bodies and wings were comprised of found scrap metal, furniture, glass, and plastic, while still maintaining the colorful uniqueness of real butterfly species. They were also shown the work of Paul Valinsky, who creates delicate butterflies cut from scrap aluminum and soda cans and arranges them into larger whimsical installations. While being encouraged to consider that all butterflies come in a variety of sizes, shapes, colors, and markings, students were instructed to create their own butterfly and to plan and allow for deviations as their butterflies were to be enchanted and transformed. Okay. Thank you very much. Is there public participation? Great.
Good evening. I'm Timor Yontar, Bates Road, Precinct 7, and Thompson parent. First, I wanted to offer my congratulations to you all for yesterday's terrific news that the MSBA has invited Arlington High School into the eligibility period for the rebuild. So, great news, well done. Second, I wanted to express my excitement about all that's been happening on so many levels in recent weeks regarding our school's challenges. This includes the work done by this committee and the administration, and at the forum that was held on Tuesday, and also the work done by the Board of Selectmen, the task force, other committees, and a town meeting. Clearly, we still have a lot of work that's yet to be done, and so my third point tonight is to offer some encouragement, and I hope even some inspiration. I have a brief deck of slides, which I will hold up, and then I'll pass out copies afterward. So, slide number one. This is New York City in 1930, an excavated site at the corner of 34th Street and 5th Avenue. Why should you care? Because of what happened to it, what it became in 1931. Slide two, the Empire State Building. Hundred-and-two stories, tallest building in the world, built in 13 months, ahead of schedule. And under budget. Now, let's move forward to the present day. Slide three, this is the Gibbs School. And pending funding, this will be renovated and will reopen as a public school in fall 2018. Now, let's see what the Gibbs School will look like when renovations start. Now, let's see what the Gibbs School will look like when renovations start. Slide four, this is the Gibbs in July 2017. Of course, this is an artist's rendition. And then, let's see what the Gibbs will look like when renovations are completed. Here's slide five, Gibbs, September 2018. So, what's my point? As Rosie the Riveter said, "We can do it." And I hope that if any of you ever waver in your belief that the Gibbs project can be completed on time, please remember that if a 102-story building can be constructed on a vacant lot in 13 months, surely we can convert a three-story school into a three-story school in 14 months. And as Nelson Mandela once said, "It always seems impossible until it is done." So, good luck. Please let us know how we, the parents, can help, and thank you. And I have copies.
Okay, great. So now, I would like to actually, I'd like to write, to introduce our AHS student representative, who attended Day on the Hill, which is a thing we go to Beacon Hill to talk to our legislators, to advocate for school funding, for other issues, and please introduce yourself and tell us about your experience. Oh, actually, we need to speak into the microphone.
I'm Danny Hallis. I'm a senior here at Arlington High School, and I went to Day on the Hill a few weeks ago, and it was definitely very informative. I think a lot of the stuff was very, like, complex, a lot about budgets and the Common Core charter schools, but I definitely learned a lot of new things, very interesting things, and Representative Garbley definitely helped us out a lot through that. He explains a lot to myself and the other members of the student council that went along with us. Yeah, it was a very fun day.
Okay, great. Any particular issues that you want to bring to our attention or to legislators' attention?
No, I don't believe so. Thank you.
Okay, well, great. Thanks.
Can I just make a comment?
Yes.
I just want to say, how well you represented Arlington and Arlington High School. They asked great questions. They were so interested in what was going on, and I wanted to let you know how impressed Representative Garbley was with the questions and just your interest. And it was, it was a lot to take in in one day, but you did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
And I hope you continue to think about ways that you can be involved in politics and issues as we go forward, and that was one of those things that was his message as well. He told them how young he was when he got elected and was encouraged them to think about it themselves.
Thank you.
Future school committee member, future legislator. Great. I also want to recognize Liz Higgins, who is our AEA rep today. Thank you. Okay, so the next on the agenda is Matt Coleman, who's going to talk to us about, give us sort of an overview of what's been happening in the math department and where we're going to from here.
So as the slides are coming down, I just wanted to thank you for having me. It is always nice to present in front of you guys. So, pretty much the goal, and I know you guys have seen the slides, and I'm going to talk through some of the, I would say, final details. The goal, pretty much, is to kind of give you an overview of what has happened in the last four years. You know, it's hard to believe that it has been four years, and some of the things that I'd hope to work on, and hopefully we can talk about some of the, I guess, different aspects and different things I'll be asking of Dr. Chessen, Dr. Bodie, you know, all of you guys, and of the department as well. Although this is a presentation, and it's in a presentation format, I encourage you to ask questions throughout. If something kind of strikes you, feel free to ask. That's fine. I know the last slide refers to questions, and I'll take some then as well, but if something does strike you, feel free to ask. So, I'll talk about...
Replacement lamp.
Replacement lamp.
Oh.
You just have to hit okay.
The eternal problem.
You need to hit okay.
What's that?
You need to hit okay.
On the computer, probably.
I, no, I think it's on, there we go. There we go, we're all set.
As soon as everybody runs out, it gets scared.
We're good, all right. So, just give you a little history. It's not like I've been here forever, it's really only been four years, but started in June 2012, lucky enough to be offered the job. I started pretty much right away, you know, it was one of those things where, at that time, I want to say, the sixth-grade team may have been attending some workshops at Edco, and I had joined them, and there were all these other little things happening during the summer that year. There was also some elementary PD, I had a chance to do that. I spent a lot of the summer cleaning, organizing, trying to wrap my head around what the job would be, meeting with a lot of you guys, meeting with a lot of community members. It was awesome. It was really, really good. September, when that started, pretty much I had spent as much time as I could in classrooms. I, you know, fully admitted, beginning, it was more time in the middle schools and high schools because of the fact that I think there was a lot of work to be done there, and I think there's been a lot of good stuff that's happened. And at that time, I was pretty much analyzing as much data as I could. You know, my goal at that point was really just trying to get a sense of what I can accomplish in the short term, and then what would be done over the next couple of years. So, some of the big things, and I don't know if you guys remember back that first year, but these were some of the big things that I would say drove my thought as to where we are right now. It really struck me as being really interesting that my first year here, there was only 76% of the seniors taking a math class. That really stuck with me. I thought that was kind of interesting in this town. There was only one math-science specialist in all of K-5. You know, my predecessor was part-time, and there was that one person working with that. In this school, and this kind of refers back to, I think, point number one, we only had two sections of AP Calc AB, which, I don't want to say one is better than the other, but that's the AP Calc, that's basically one semester, and that was the only AP course we offered at the high school level, which was kind of interesting. We had no computer science at the high school. The middle school teachers were using curriculum from 2011, no, 2000, which didn't take into account that there was a standard shift in 2004 and in 2011. So, this was a little antiquated. And at the elementary level, I would say, it was inconsistent. You know, it was one of those things where, at the time, I think we had, you know, just different resources allocated at different places. In spite of all these things, these are big things I noticed, things were going well, they were going good, but it really kind of gave me a little bit of a focus of what was going to happen. So the past four years, this is pretty much what I focused on, and in my mind, I always chunked it as, you know, K-5 initiatives, 6-8 initiatives, and high school initiatives. At the elementary level, really, kind of my big focus was trying to get an infrastructure in that could really start to focus on curriculum and instruction at the elementary level. In terms of getting a lot more resources, that was going to be a tough sell at the beginning. I don't know if you guys remember, at 2012, new standards came in, at 2011, a lot of the textbook distributors at that time rearranged what their content was, they slapped on the Common Core sticker, and then they resold it as something that was brand-new. It really didn't meet what we needed, so at that time, my decision and what we kind of went for was, let's attack more of the curriculum instruction aspect of it, let's try to support the teachers, let's try to get something a little bit more in there and kind of wait out until we felt as though the better curriculum content or something that was more in line with what we wanted, both in practice and in content, was there. And in the meantime, we also had some digital, I would say, technological improvements throughout the district, so incorporating something that was a little bit more tech-savvy was something that was good as well. So that took a little bit of patience. That's that bullet point number two. That's where we're kind of starting right now. You know, in the background, I always wanted to kind of refresh that K-5 curriculum because it was chunked, it was kind of a Franken curriculum, is that a good way to say it? So it was one of those things where we definitely needed refreshing, but we needed to wait a little bit. So initially, it really was about that, just that support, like, how do we actually get it so we could have consistent professional development in the summertime, consistent people to go to for questions, someone who could be in classes a little more frequently to see what's happening? You know, I have a lot of energy, and I try to pride myself on being a lot of places. I don't think I could have been in nine places at once. So it's been great to have those other resources to help me out. At the middle school, you know, this was one of those things where there were some pretty clear nears with restructuring our math support program at that time. We had two teachers who were in charge of working with a lot of students who were struggling across all grades. At that time, they were structured in a way that it was tough to really meet the needs of everyone, so we restructured a little bit there, and we really tried to foster a relationship with special ed that's continuing to be done right now. We had a lot of students at that time also who were looking for other opportunities for advancement. I would never say that I've actually solved all the problems that we have, but the bypassing option has been a pretty good solution for some of our students right now. Curriculum update. Luckily enough, the folks who wrote CMP, Connected Math, they were a little bit ahead of curve with the updating of their curriculum, so it was one of those things, when we shifted over to CMP 3, we were able to actually do that in year two and year three of my time. We're at full implementation right now. I think it's been a great sell for the teachers. They've really bought in. I think it was one of those things that, at the time, we needed a refresher, and it's done a good job for them. First year here also, and this was a big goal, a lot of times, it's not rocket science, and this was definitely, you know, I have to thank Lauren Cathy for doing this, getting release time, like, full-day release time with teachers, my first year and second year, just to sit down and look at the standards, plan, kind of reset calibration. It was one of those things where, in the first few years, we did a lot of that, and it was awesome. The other thing is, we, really, at that time, I also saw a huge need for computer science in the middle school. Nothing at the high school, wasn't anything at the middle school, but there was this little nook class called DCL, Digital Citizenship and Literacy at that time, which covered some good stuff, but it was definitely a place where we can kind of change some stuff. And at that time, I know there's some percentages throughout this, that class was mandatory, but it essentially covered 76% of the kids who were in sixth grade. AHS, you know, I already kind of alluded to some of the things that were areas that I wanted to kind of work in there. That's all up here. Creating new cost offerings was big. That kind of lends itself to the fact that we only had 76% of the seniors. We had to figure out more pathways, more ways for our students to access with actually the content and different pathways. So I really focused on those higher-level classes and the lower-level classes. I kind of tackled and went after the extremes to see if we can make some inroads there. We built the CS program, that was a big thing. Another big part at the high school was that, at that time, there were 11 high school math teachers. Five had over 128 students. At that time, the math department in the high school was, there was a lot of teachers who had a lot of students, a lot of students, and that was over. I want to say the high that year was 136 for one teacher. It was a lot. And I needed to figure out ways to get a little bit more common planning time for those teachers. This is amazing, and I still, to this day, can't imagine this. My first year here, no single math teacher in the high school had a common planning time with a teacher who taught the same level of the same course. I don't think if you tried to schedule that, that would happen. I was amazed by that. I thought that was one of the most amazing things I had seen, so it was really tough for us to get a lot of, kind of, conversation. So, current state. You know, that was a quick little overview. And any questions for all that stuff? Those are the big things that I saw.
How's CMP going in the middle school?
I think it's going well. You know, it's one of the things where, they're at that point right now, since we're in about year two, year three, teachers are now starting to make their own adjustments because they feel more comfortable. You know, whenever you initially adopt it, when you make those changes, you may not understand the ripple effect until it's too late. So, that first year, I asked for 100% fidelity. Year two, you make your minor adjustments. Now that we're in year three, there's some ownership, there's some more thoughtful changes, there are some other little aspects that are being modified, and I think it's now becoming more Arlington curriculum as opposed to CMP 3, which is nice. But it takes time, you know. It's, what's also good is it's a form of PD for the teachers as well. They have to lend themselves to trying something a little different, trying something new. Because of the program, you know, our eighth-grade team chose collaboration and discourse as their goals to work on for this year, because it really dovetailed in nicely with what, and how the content was actually delivered, and it's been great. You know, some of the things that I've seen in the class, both in terms of the content and the conversations, has been really good.
I would really, we're also using that in Lexington, and this is our second year of implementation, and I'm trying to get together a couple of districts that might want to work together to make some of those modifications, because I've seen some good ones, and I feel like I want to share.
There's, we should talk, because there's another local district that's going to make the change for next year, too.
Oh, good.
So, we could definitely talk. So now, I mean, this is great. We have six math coaches. You know, over three years, we've been able to build that up, and it's been awesome. I can't tell you how invaluable they are to me. They're great. They really are great. I'm lucky to work with them. And still, there is this focus on curriculum instruction, professional development, because we were waiting out kind of the movement towards a new curriculum. The curriculum visions, this is kind of the big one for us for the next couple of years. We are going to adopt the new Investigations 3.0, and that's going to start next year, so I'll touch on that in a little bit. We revised the progress reports. Finally, they actually match the current standards and match all the initial stuff. And these all sound like such, like, simple little things, but it takes time, it takes work, it takes a lot of meeting with teachers and figuring out the best way to go about it. And right now, we're kind of in the midst of restructuring what I would call our Tier Two and Tier Three, our kind of secondary supports for some of our struggling learners and some instances, just other students who might need a little bit of help. The coaches satisfy what I would call kind of Tier One support, which is that curriculum, the instruction part, but we really need to kind of start to focus on what happens for some of those groups of students who might be struggling and/or individual students who need a little bit more. We still haven't built that up as much as we can.
Yes, Mr. Hannah.
The second line on the slide begs the question, 6 equals 7. Are there any plans to have another one?
Yeah, you know, to add even more math, it's 5.0 FTE for six coaches for seven schools, yeah. So they're not even all full-time. So, yeah, I, you know, I always have my grand plans, but, you know, it would be one of those things where I would love it if we had a one-to-one correspondence.
I guess, I was looking to the question up here, less to you, for the future.
When we get to the slide about what I see for the future, we'll talk about that.
Just a wish list.
Yeah, yeah, please, please, yes. So that's comparative current state. Current state of OMS, we're fully implemented with CMP 3, it's going well. We're definitely in line with movements, what I think is good, which is much more collaborative-based classrooms, much more conversation, a little more ownership of the knowledge, and teachers are really starting to be thoughtful about the ways in which we're asking questions, which is nice. And I would say this also, the infusion of some of the technologically, technology that we've had in sixth grade has also helped with that. It shifted the way in which some of the kids can communicate. DCL, which I talked about before, which was 76% of enrollment, now we've renamed as DML, Digital Media and Literacy, and essentially, that course is now, we're supporting 88% of the kids, which, you know, considering that the cohorts of kids are actually growing larger, we're working with a lot more kids now, with the same FTEs that we had before, but now the citizenship aspect is a secondary goal. We do a lot more, I would say, robust units that are focusing on design, algorithm thinking, you know, good project-based things that kids are doing in Scratch, HTML, at the sixth grade level, which is awesome. It's hard to get that in the middle school, and the fact that we found some real estate in sixth grade is awesome. Math support, talked a little about the structure, and we were able to get it, so now that we have one math support teacher per grade, one that's dedicated to six, one to seven, one to eight, which has been invaluable to me as well. It's increased our ability to actually almost read and react with some students a little bit more. Before, we'd populate our classes, and there wasn't a whole lot of room for movement. Now I could actually start with a lower student enrollment and actually grow throughout the year, which is good. Another thing that the math support teacher does, I got to say this, if you guys ever go to the middle school and you see your friendly math support teacher, please thank them. They have a hard, hard job. They do great work. They also co-teach our separate math classes with the special educator, and all three of them also have other obligations. Julie McDaniel in sixth grade teaches the independent study in geometry. Shukti official does some work in kind of outreach with the LL, and then Jeff Melton, because of the fact that there was a higher enrollment in eighth grade, actually teaches a section of Math 8 to actually help balance out the sections. So for a lot of those teachers, all three of them, they have three or four different preps, they're trying to communicate with multiple teachers, they're doing really great work, really, really great work, and really helping out in a lot of ways.
Dr. Allison, I'd be ahead of it.
What you're saying about the changes where the collaborative partner on, I'm wondering, I know we're interested in achievement and assessment of that, but I'm wondering if you're seeing more interest and enthusiasm, because I think that's really important to develop in the kids, too.
Yeah, you know, I would say that also goes in conjunction, and I put in the slides, but I have to kind of, definitely, definitely tout the work that John McIntyre has done with the middle school math club. There's a lot more opportunities, there's a lot more things for kids to do, and when I go through the classrooms, kids are happy, they're doing math, they're working. You know, it's oftentimes when you walk in, kids will ask me questions, I don't see many, I don't see many dour faces, I don't see many kids who are not, I wouldn't say kids are jumping off the rafters, having like the greatest time in the world, but there is, yeah, enthusiasm, yeah, definitely is. And then, the bypassing. You know, I kind of treaded lightly with the bypassing, because if you don't have the full-fledged geometry class, oftentimes, it's a race to nowhere. So now, we bypass sixth grade, we actually have a fully-formed geometry class that actually matches the same geometry class that we have at the high school. One of the great things about Julie McDaniel is that she taught in the high school. She has a good working relationship with the teachers here, they share content, they're at the same place. I feel pretty good about the fact that those students in those courses are, you know, receiving a pretty good education in terms of the math. Those students...
Sorry, technical problems. There you go.
You got the green light? Those students going inside there, there's seven kids inside that class, that class is awesome. Those kids are so excited about the math they're doing, they've done some really, really good stuff, really good stuff. Current state of the high school. If there is one thing I'm probably the most proud of, it's probably that first thing, before, 76% of seniors. I double-checked this again last week to make sure I was right. It's 97% of seniors now. We're virtually at 99% of all kids taking a math class across the board, and I think one of the greatest stats also is that if you look at capacity of the math department right now in the high school against enrollment, we're actually at 111%, because we have kids that are doing two classes at the same time, they're taking computer science... taking computer science. They're doing a lot of other stuff. It's pretty ridiculous. It's pretty amazing. And I attribute that all to the work of the, the math teachers. I mean, they're not only, you know, putting these courses in, they're making these courses, I think, worthwhile and fun. I don't know if that answers a little bit about the enthusiasm as well. Like, the kids are coming back to the math classes. Kids are coming back, and they're saying, and that's really kind of, I would say, helped out. You know, we've definitely had an increase in staffing, which we've needed to kind of take, take some of that on, and it's been great. I know, little, talked a little about computer science this morning. My first year, no computer science. We have ninety-three kids currently this year across four, five sections, and right now, we have about a hundred and four kids sign up for next year. And enrollment hasn't stopped, which is, which is great. Kids are accessing that class. In terms of the increasing staffing, that's been a huge help. Right now, the staffing, the kind of the per pupil, you know, average that a teacher has, it's more in line with the, the rest of the school, which I feel good about. And since I'm a numbers person, I, I pay a lot of attention to standard deviation and variance and make sure that things are balanced. I'd said before about the, the number of teachers who had over a hundred and twenty-six, was it, a hundred and twenty-eight students. Now, the highest that anybody has is a hundred and twenty-four, and that's the highest, which is good. It's a lot, lot more manageable. The teachers are appreciative of the fact that they're not overwhelmed. Everyone is taking over, ownership over the education, which is great. It's really good. Goals moving forward. So I just kind of chucked this in three things. I have a couple of slides up here to kind of reinforce what it is. It's at that point. Right now, it sounds kind of weird, but you know, year one, year two, I was reading and reacting to, I would say, what was here before. Year three and year four, I really feel like this is, you know, my department now. You know, this is one of those things where I want to set the tone. I have a better handle of all the, the stats. I have a better handle of what we're doing moving forward. So these would be the big things going forward for me. We've done a good development, still work to do of that coaching team. We have a three-year plan for the infusion of a new curriculum. So I feel in the next, over that seven years, we have a good plan for curriculum instruction with a little bit of, and enhance, enhancement in the assessment. What we have to start to do is actually build more of a robust program that is that Tier Two, Tier Three part. We need to be able to now start to find that time within a school day. We have to find, you know, possibly those assessments that are going to inform us of, of these individual things that we could do with students. And then we actually have to start to hire some staff. Right now, it's, you know, not where I'd want it to be, but the way I envision it, I think before you were talking about what I'd like to see, I do want to see a coach at every school, and I do want to see a student interventionist in a school. Like, what I'd like to see is that team, that cooperation of someone who's going to be working with teachers, with instruction, with the, the content, and then someone who is going to be working together with the principal, who will be focused on individual students if they need to be pulled or small groups. And when, in my vision, it's also a good relationship with special education as well. Like, to me, that seems to make sense. It seems to be that we can actually accomplish a lot. I have no illusion that I'll be able to get fourteen staff members over the next couple of years, so I'm fine with treading, treading, you know, slowly. So, you know, one of the things you'll see is, how do we start to actually work with those students? So when I see these high-need students, I see it starting in kindergarten, going all the way up, and I want to make sure we have a pretty comprehensive program to actually work with these students. At OMS, oddly enough, you know, I said before about all the good things that are happening in math support. I still think we can fine-tune it and do it a little bit better. You know, right now, we're echoing the main curriculum that we do, but the reality is, I like to start to, to work with students on more of an individual basis if we can, and find a secondary curriculum that can actually help supplement some of what we're doing. In terms of OMS and AHS, this kind of goes together. We also have to kind of figure out a better way to meet the, the varying needs of a lot of our students. You know, we're working with social, emotional. Sometimes we're working with cognitive. We're working behavioral. So how do we actually take those math support resources to create a more diverse support system or offering for all of these students? And in AHS, the restructure in the math special I just kind of, I just alluded to, we're pretty much, Dan, Dan Sheldon and I, the computer science teacher, we talk pretty regularly about what we want to see happen. And this ties into the last, the ultimate one. I want to start to increase some more math offerings, and I want to do it in a way we can offer some half-year electives because of the fact that I like to start to see more kids take the chance to, to try out some of these classes. Right now, with all of our classes, we're at a hundred and eleven percent, and it's amazing, but kids are, are committing themselves to full-year classes. So I could see us in the CS department start to consider half-year electives. I could see us putting in courses such as linear algebra that can be accessed after an Algebra II background, for the most part, and it could be a half-year course for some students to take, something like a number theory. All this has to be done in conjunction with staffing, and that's one of the things where, you know, I always work on is bringing in, you know, good people who can, who could teach these classes. But really, what I want to start to do is to round out the department to not just have these core Algebra I, geometry, Algebra II pathways with the standard capstone courses, but to offer something that's a little bit more, you know, when you get to college and realize math is a lot more than just calc, I want to offer some glimpse into that. And I like to start to make some connections with other stuff. But for the most part, that's, that's kind of what we're looking for. Little things, was that the end?
That's it.
Oh, there we go. Okay. Yep. Any questions?
Great, thanks. Matt, can I just emphasize?
Please.
There was something that you skipped over, and that is the need to build CS courses.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. Thank you. Yes. Middle school. I, I really, really would love to get seventh and eighth grade computer science. That's going to take a little bit of work with both staffing and also kind of massaging the schedule and figuring out how to actually make that work. It's not as easy as it sounds. There are a lot of obstacles, but that's one of those things where I'll be pushing for the next couple of years. How do I actually get it to be a six through twelve, good cohesive pathway?
So, thank you, Matt. Good presentation, as always. My question is, if, you know, we might not be able to do all of this budget-wise.
No, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, but.
It's a goal, right?
It's a goal, yeah. So, that's right. So as a goal, what would be your priorities? You know, if you were to go to Dr. Boddy and say, this is what I want to do in FY18, what would you, you don't have to, you don't have to commit to it right now, but in this, what are your, what are your kind of top priorities here?
You know, it's, it's tough for me to answer because, like I said before, I think about it as K through five, six through eight. And if I say any one, it might diminish the others. I would say probably that the, the top part right now would be really working with K through five, getting the coaches, getting the interventionists, getting the curriculum solidly in there, would probably be priority number one, because I think that would pay dividends for all grades eventually at some point. So that would probably be, yeah, item number one. You know, I, I could always, I, I, I always try to be creative with, with staffing and enrollment at the other grades. Yeah, so I'd probably say the, the elementary stuff.
Thank you.
No problem.
Yes, Mr. Henner.
Thank you again for phenomenal presentation. My only concern with all these extra courses and a hundred and eleven percent is the emotional issue and the pressure on the kids. Are you, you and your teachers involved in basically evaluating how much kids are doing? I know...
Like, overall with everything?
Well, the idea, I mean, you, you mentioned that several, some students are taking more than one math course at a time. And AP, other AP courses and things of that nature, they may be taking that aren't math-related. I'm just concerned that departments are isolated, that there's not this coordination to all of a sudden realize that you got a student taking like three, four AP courses at once.
So, I'll tell you this, Guidance has done a pretty good job of monitoring that. They, they often look at that. They often are advising kids, I think, in a pretty thoughtful way. I don't think we can grow much past a hundred and eleven percent because after a while, it's, it's, there's almost a cannibalization. You know, the, the reality is, our, our CS numbers jumped up, but our CAD numbers went down. You know, there's only so many sections and so many things to do. What, what, what I kind of view it as is I want to give kids some opportunity to take some classes. I by no means believe that we'll go to a hundred and twenty percent. What I believe is that the courses would just be distributed differently. You know, it, it's great for me to see that a lot of our kids didn't choose calc as their, you know, their through thread. They're choosing the AP stats course because a lot of times, that's more transferable to what they might do in the future. So I don't, I don't think there's going to be, I hope, I don't, I don't mean this to intend that there's going to be kids taking four or five math classes. I just want to give them the opportunity to take a course if they want, and then, you know, for me to staff it appropriately, fully knowing that enrollment for another course would go down.
I want to make it clear. I am excited about all the offerings that you're offering, and the more that you go, I think it's an exciting thing to, to give students the multiple choices. And just the idea of calculus, I don't know how many people that aren't math majors or sci, very heavy science majors, the, the stats course is something all of us can use.
Yeah, it's, 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 they're, they're good courses. They're good courses. And they, they speak well to each other. Computer science and stats. I mean, that's an avenue where I'd like to see a little more integration because at this point, they are so interrelated.
Right. Thank you.
Ms. Dirks.
I'm really excited about the computer science. At my daughter's graduation this year, the keynote speaker was the woman who founded Girls Who Code. And she was unbelievable. And she got up there and said that the number one job, we are about to have a shortage of programmers. And not only, her goal is not only to make the United States the number one supplier, but she is going to do it by getting girls to code. And it's, it was fascinating, and she was unbelievable. And then yesterday, I attended a summit, and the keynote speaker was Kathy Fosnitz. And she was talking about how the number one important thing that they have found that kids need going into kindergarten and starting early is early numeracy, the most important thing, even more important than reading and literacy, because if they have the math, the reading comes easier. And that is the number one indicator. And I was just like, oh, this makes me so excited to be a teacher right now. Like, look at us. We've got to get to these.
I agree with everything you just said. Kathy Fosno is fantastic. No, it is. I mean, it's, um, yeah, it's great. You know, it, it really is. Early, any type of early intervention and, and doing things well at the early grades really, really does pay dividends long-term. That, that definitely is one of my hopes. Yeah.
So, good. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I want to, yeah, saying this also, everything we talked about, everything that's happened was money and resources. Like, for me, it's thank you to you guys. You know, this is one of those things where I do appreciate the trust that you guys had in terms of the teachers, myself, and building all of this because, you know, it's, it's an investment, and I think we're getting stuff out of our investment right now. We are seeing some improvements. It's what we do now. Like, I actually think, I was talking to my wife about this a couple nights ago. I actually think my job for the next couple of years is going to be harder than the first couple of years because now we're talking about fine-tuning. We're talking about trying to be much more creative. Like, these are big, broad-stroke, you know, changes that you can do with some investment, some, some personnel. It's, it's about to get a lot harder. And that's, that's good. That's all right.
Thank you. Yes, Dr. Allison Abbey.
I'm trying to remember the name of the program. I think it's Plato that we have done for enrichment for students who are having achievement problems or something in math. And I'm wondering, I don't even know if this comes under your department per se.
Special Ed used that a lot.
Right. Do you work with them at all? I'm, I'm wondering if it's helpful or not from your pers, in your perspective.
Yeah, they, there are so many computer programs out there right now that different teachers are using, you know, at different levels. One of the hard parts for me is corralling it all and understanding what exactly we want to use. So Special Ed has used Plato. I think there are pros and cons to it. It's a little bit more superficial. It's, it's good as the resource it's used for. I would say it's like kind of a Tier Two, Tier Three resource, as long as there's, you know, a staff member who's also working with a student as well. It's good practice. You know, there's, there are other things throughout, you know, it'll be a long conversation. I could tell you different things that are happening at different levels. But yeah, for the most part, I, I would say that's primarily used by Special Ed.
Mr. Carden.
Thank you. A great presentation. So as, as we talk about adding more, you know, math support, you know, we've added, you know, over the probably last five or 10 years, we've added reading support. We've added social workers. We've added these math coaches, literacy coaches. We've added a lot of out-of-classroom staff. So one way we can do that, though, is by sort of balancing that against class size. And so I think we have to have a, a conversation and also educate the parents that, yes, class sizes may creep up a little bit, but because we've got some, all this other support, it may not be the end of the world. So I think if we, if we want to push in that direction, then that's, that's a conversation we have to start having.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have a lot more control over the, the class sizes in the middle school and high school, and I do put a lot of work. You know, actually, before this, I, I was in my office crunching numbers and trying to figure out the best way to balance everything at the middle school. And I think that's been done pretty well so far. I think it's getting better. But yeah, everything, you know, a lot of times, it's a zero-sum game, and you just have to figure out what it is that you value, what your goals are, what you want to see as a typical class size. And I, I think a lot of things you alluded to at the elementary level, what you're okay with, and then how do we actually build the structures around that as well. Yeah, it's never, it's never easy.
Oh, Ms. Dirks.
I have one more question I just remembered. So tonight, we vote Gibbs, sixth grade?
Yeah.
Or Gibbs, six, seven, eight?
So you're on the spot.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
Little red flag.
My personal feeling, everything that I've talked to for the teachers, I, I would say Gibbs, sixth grade. I would say. That, that's where I would be leaning towards right now, if those were the two choices.
Okay. Does that make the intervention easier, more possible in sixth grade? Because now we can play with the schedules. We can find that time.
Yeah, it's hard to say what the infrastructure will be because, you know, it also comes with a restructuring, I would imagine, of staffing and have, you know, I'd imagine, before I could answer that, I'd have to see what the restructuring of the staffing would be and what I'd have for resources, and then try to make a plan off of that. I don't know if it would be easier or harder. I could tell you this, I'll do the best I can to figure it out.
Great, thank you.
No problem.
And I'll just say just a couple of things, which is I'm particularly excited about the introduction potentially of linear algebra and the statistics courses because from personal experience, I know there's a lot of really fun math that is not calculus.
There is, there is.
There's a lot of other fun math out there.
And it's all related. You know, a, a real good linear algebra course, you really should have some calc. But you could pull off a linear algebra class without it and, and, you know, relate it, transfer it to what's happening in some of your science classes and computer science classes, which is good. Guys, thank you very much.
Well, thank you so much.
Thanks for sharing.
So, next up is Larry Weathers. He's going to talk to us about science. And I just want to tell you what we're doing, which is that we are, we are, this spring, but also in the fall, trying to get sort of information from each of the departments to sort of get a overview sense of where we've been, where we're going, what our hopes are. And so we started with history, I think was our first.
Yes.
And we will not be finishing up this spring, but we, we hope to finish in the fall.
2016. It's a brand new book.
The science always has, you know, it's got lab equipment and materials, and I wanted to share some of it with you.
So I just want to say, we are a couple of minutes ahead, which is great because we have extra time. We're a couple of minutes ahead of our schedule, which is great, so we have extra time. No, no, but, but just a worry, I know that it usually takes about two minutes per slide, so I know that we'll probably have to rush through some of the slides, but that they are available for the public to look at as well.
Okay. Okay, yeah, well, thank you for allowing me to, to share with you some of the, the struggles and accomplishments we're going through in our science department. The, sorry, is this a, oh, it's over. These are the, the mission statements of the science department. Now, it ends up that the, the new science standards just came out last month, the formal printing of them. And they almost totally mirror these, and I'm sort of proud to say that we had these before the science standards came out. So we're, we're interested in, in lifelong learning about being literate science citizens. And, and so that's, that's where we're, we're really trying to head. So, my colleague from the math department is left, so that's why I inserted this slide here. I wa, I wanted you to see, although it, it's, it's not entirely obvious, where is science? It's at the core. If you, if you look at, if you look at the upper-left picture, and you can barely see the word "science" on the left, it's just a little closer to the heavens than math. The math is down there, a little further down on the right. And when we demolish this building and rebuild it, we can make consideration. Okay, well, I'm, I'm just.
Don't take it for granted.
I'm describing this, the current state of affairs. And then in, you know, in the vertical view, science is right there in the center. It's connected to every one of those disciplines. It uses math. Science goes on in all the countries of the globe. It uses language, and it's, the history of it is very rich. And, and so I, I, of course, use these pictures tongue-in-cheek, but, so the question is, if we're at the core, which I was positing before, why weren't we at the table? And at, as we have gone through a progression of, of regulatory documents from NCLB to ESSA to the new science, technology, and engineering frameworks, which were just adopted, we have started to move from that back burner to the front burner. We're not all the way there yet, but we've started. Our scores count, not, not to focus totally on test-taking. We really want the lifelong learning, but our scores count now. They're part of... They're part of, they're part of what, what matters in terms of our annual reports and how the state views us. So, we have our new standards that just came out, and what do they look like? Here's an example. The, the standards are too complicated to look at in a, in a short presentation, but they're composed of two major sections, one called disciplinary core ideas, which are, you know, the areas of each topical discipline of life science, physical science, and earth science. And here's an example from grade three physical science. Provide evidence to explain the effect of multiple forces, including friction, et cetera. And these are all worded as, as what should the student be able to do at the end of a unit that's addressing the standards, their performance standards. And so, this is, this is a very important part of the new science standards, as well as the practices that were added. Long ago, the inquiry strands were in our early standards, back in the early 1990s, and then they slowly got pulled out, and more and more, because of the difficulty of testing them. And so, they're back in, and, and they are claiming that they're going to test them, and we'll, we'll see how that all works. But, but I've seen some very creative questions being developed. And, and so, if you look at these science and engineering practices, which really are the inquiry skills that kids, that we're hoping that kids experience, these are the ways scientists work. And I think if you pick through those, you can see that they really totally overlap the ELA and the math practices. The Common Core is in there two-thirds of the way, and the math standards are, and practices are in there. They're really overlapping. And the, so the, the writers of the new science standards were well aware of that, and they, that is one of the advantages in the sense of going last, in terms of the development of the ELA and math Common Core standards, and then the next-generation science standards came along. But they had the wisdom to know how to incorporate that in overlap with the, with the, with the Common Core. Massachusetts, of course, always has its own way of doing some educational things, and, and it didn't strictly adopt the NGSS. It pushed a few parts aside, but it made a few parts stronger, which included the engineering practices. So, it's, it's an expectation that engineering is embedded in all of the science courses. We're not there yet, but we're, we're looking for the ways to do that, so that every course will have opportunities for kids to, to look at problems and try to solve those problems and make iterative changes to reach a solution, in an engineering kind of process. So, embedded within that new framework is this little table on the left. It's called the assumed minutes per day to, to reach the standards that, that are expected and that will be tested in about, approximately, it's still being debated when it'll be tested, but it'll be probably about two years, maybe three. So, you can see in K through two, they're assuming that we're spending two hours per week, three through five, three hours per week, six through eight, four point five, and, and in high school, five point five. And you can see in the middle column there that we are very shy of that. And this is our anticipated time for next year. In prior years, before the standards were developed and before we were on the table in terms of the regulatory things, it was even less than this. And so, so that's one of our challenges, is how do we, how do we work with these time And again, I just cut and pasted that table right out of the standards. So, one of the things we're doing is we have adopted a new program called FOS. The program itself is not new, but the iteration called the Next Gen Edition is new. It came, they were so on top of it, they came out right after the Next Gen was adopted. And, and it's really the best program on the market. These are the topical areas, in columns of physical science, earth and space science, and, and life science, through the, through the five years of elementary school. We have been in our rollout. This current year, we have introduced these kits to grades one, two, and three. And in the coming fall, we will be introducing them to grades four and five. The program is, is research-based. It was developed at the Lawrence Hall of Science and University of California, Berkeley. It is centered on those two, those two statements there. Science is inherently interesting to kids, and they love to play around and muck around in boats, and, and to explore things. So, there's a quote from one of our more experienced elementary school teachers. "We're loving the new science kits, very teacher and kid-friendly." She's a veteran teacher. And the new teachers are still having trouble with it, as they would with any new curriculum. So, we're, you know, we're finding where we have gaps, we're finding where we need support, and we're trying to plug those holes, but by and large, it's a really, really rich curriculum. So, an example, the motion and matter unit from grade three. Students explore, it's called motion and matter, and they do it through a variety of experiments. They first of all build tops, spin them. You can imagine kids in third grade loving this. And then they create new interactions, they, they create an axle with wheel, a wheel on each side, but the wheels are not the same size, so it does some strange things. And then they start exploring that, and eventually have to build cars that are part of an engineering design challenge, where the cars have to do certain tricks. They have to turn left and right and end up under ramps and things like that. So, so it's hard to notice where, where science and engineering learning ends and where play begins. And that's the great thing about this, is that the kids really, really love doing it. Some strong points about the FOS system is that it's, it's got really high-quality supports. It is very language-based, and I've shown you that the, I just passed around these examples of folios and, and student resources. The hardcover book is a reader. And so, one of the strategies that we're talking about in terms of how do we get that time to deal with the science that we, we need, these informational reading passages are directly part of the science experiments they're doing. And so, what we're trying to do is see if there are ways that we can use these as part of an overlap with our ELA informational reading time, and thereby gain some time It's really, you know, as I said, the Common Core overlap is striking. It has a very strong notebooking component. One of the other folios I passed out is all about the philosophy and the, the strategies of notebook-taking that get kids to read and write and articulate. And it, it has built-in ELL strategies. It's really a 21st century program. Very rich formative assessment and technology resources for the teachers. And teacher prep videos, a teacher can go and, and look at a five-minute video of what the lesson is that they have to do a day or two from now, and see what it looks like. And, you know, we try to give them the professional development ahead of time, but for them to go back and be able to review that at home, on their computer or wherever, is, is a real great thing. It uses a lot of language for inquiry, and they're consistently involved in writing in their notebooking, and, and all the other things that it says here. They, they are asked to engage in argumentation based on evidence, and, and the research really shows that, that when kids learn either from just pure reading, or even just from pure experimenting, the, the learning is nowhere near as deep as when they're asked to reflect on it, write about it, and read about it. It's, it's really an integrated approach. And you can imagine that if a student were to read and write about something, what better than something that's right in front of them, or that they saw that day, or the day before? A bunch of growing plants, watching why some die and some don't, and, and articulating that, it's concrete and it's right there, so it, it really aids in the writing. So, with that, with the pressure from the congested curriculum and, and the lack of enough time for science, science notebooking is a way of, of helping with that. I think you probably noticed where that notebook page on the upper-left came from. That's a page out of, out of Leonardo da Vinci's book. His, his lab notebook, okay? And so, our kids are starting to do this. You know, you can see a progression there of second, third, and fourth grade, even though this fourth-grade example is not from our students, because they haven't had this yet. But kids start to articulate in, in the right, bottom-right, from a fourth-grade student, although you can't read it from here, the student was observing plants growing, the teacher posted a sticky and said, "Where's your evidence?" And the kid answers back, "My evidence is," and gives a hypothesis, may or may not be correct, but it's, it's the start of, of an argumentation from evidence. And so, we, we hope that notebooking is going to be a very strong part of this program. And we get to the Addison Middle School. Now, this, this cartoon was obviously meant for a different kind of sandwiching, but I think the, the middle school was sandwiched for a while, because when the Common Core came out, the NGSS got delayed. We were waiting for the NGS, the, the Next Generation Science Standards, to be developed, because we knew that the Massachusetts science standards wouldn't get developed until the NGSS came out. And at the same time, so, so we were reluctant to, to make whole, big purchases for grade levels of science materials, not knowing what those standards, how they were changing. And at the same time, we didn't want to get old books. You know, we go from the good to the bad and the ugly, you know. This is pre-2000, and, and, and that's what, that's what we're using, in a sense, right now. So, we wanted to go to digital resources, it's, it's definitely the way to go, but then we also had to, to be cognizant of when the digital access was going to be there. And, you know, it came up through the middle, the elementary school and is now finally there, so we're ready to roll. We have some money in the, in the budget for next year to explore those digital resources and start recommending, so we're, we're moving in that direction. This is our current curriculum, and this is already partly revised to the new standards. We've moved a few things around already. Astronomy used to be in the eighth grade, now it's in the sixth grade, and we're just kind of finding what we need to move into, to align ourselves with the new standards. So, we have old texts, but creative teachers who have been developing their own materials along the way, and we have that budget to, to help that process along. They, they keep it lab-oriented, and we've had a great writing program, a CER program, Claims Evidence Reasoning, and that's through sixth through eighth. The students are asked to really defend what they do in their lab experiments and collecting data, explain it, and argue, and, and produce arguments that will defend it. So, at the middle school, we also have some state and nationally acclaimed technology teachers, from the MasTech and NSTA and the International Technology Educators Association. We've had some awards acclimating our program and our teachers as, as top-notch. And, and technology is, in the new standards, it is an equal part to all the sciences. And so, we're, we're proud to, to sponsor that and to, and to have a robust program there. And it has engaging and pertinent after-school activities. This year, we had to double the amount of staff that would manage the robotics people, because there were so many kids that wanted to be part, part of it. We have had a growing science fair effort at the middle school. Moving quickly on to the high school, we have solid core courses, and we try to maintain a heavy lab emphasis, although size and scheduling has, has started to become a limitation. And we, at the same time, are, are increasing our use of digital access, and, and we thank the AEF, some AEF members who were instrumental in, in bringing us new digital access devices, walked through our school today, and I think they found, they enjoyed what they saw. We thank the Capitol Committee for all their contributions to that, and, and you, the Arlington Public Schools, and, and the people who make those decisions, those. We're, we're moving along, we're on a moving train now, and we're going to, we're going to try to keep it going that way. So, we have, you know, our core courses, introductory physics, biology, chemistry, and physics, and our electives, we're proud of these capstone courses, astronomy, archaeology, oceanography, anatomy and physiology, engineering, environmental science. There's a lot there to interest kids. And they, and they, and they show that to us. I'll show you the statistics in, in a minute. Our AP is growing, so you can see the years here, and next year, we're anticipating eight sections, and our enrollment is going from 136 to 183. Part of that is our Enviro AP, which was recently enough added. And we are still struggling with that a little bit, which I think you'll see in the next slide. You know, we needed to, we brought in a, a teacher had never taught that before, it was a new curriculum, so we had some alignment to do. So, our, our, our performance in the AP is really quite strong. In the bio and chem and physics, these are scores three, four, and five. In the AP, as I said, we, we needed some alignment and calibration. I think we're there. I think this last year, we were there, but we will see in July when the new scores come So, this is, this is sort of like the issue that Matt Coleman brought up. We, we have a science requirement of three courses, but I just took a poll through, through our data specialists, of the average number of science courses taken by senior over their four years here, and it's 4.28. So, not only did most students surpass the requirement of three and take four, but about 28% took a fifth course. So, that brings up the same question that you asked, Bill, you know, are we pushing the kids too much? Well, again, I think we, we counsel the kids carefully to, to, to not look at this as an, as an isolated choice. You know, in fact, just today, I had a student say, "Can I, you know, as a sophomore, can I take AP Environmental and Chemistry?" And I said, "I don't think so." I think, and AP Environmental is a capstone course, so first of all, you'd be going into it without biology and chemistry, and, and, you know, you wouldn't get as much out of it. So, we do counsel our kids when to and when not to take these courses, and of course, that social-emotional piece is very strong there, because if, if students want to take three honors and three APs, of course, they're going to be stressed out, and only some kids can do that. So, our MCAS is strong and growing. These are just two snippets. All students on the, on the top left, you know, in going from 14 to 15, the, the colors don't show it here, but on the left is, is advanced, second left is proficient, third left is needs improvement, and, and the right side is failure. And so, we've increased, going from 14 to 15, our, our proficiency, our, our advanced, I mean, quite significantly, and we've decreased our needs improvement a bit. We still have a lot of work to do. We're interested in those kids that are in that gap. And even though we make some, you know, you can see that our proficient group went up, you know, we, we still have, we still have more people in those later bars there than we want, and we're, we're looking at strategies to solve that. So, we have many adjunct activities at the high school, robotics, Olympiad, Enviro Guard, and Maker Space internships and seminars. We have a lot of, lot of speakers come in, you know, all the way from astronauts to many, many different scientists and science writers. And the future directions. So, we, we really see increasing our digital access, we're moving into a BYOD, you know, there'll be, there'll be hurdles and hiccups along the way, and we'll figure out what those are, and we'll work our way through them. and we'll work our way through them. And as that occurs, we're looking at more digital resources and increased lab space, we really need that. Now, the new building project should solve that over time. And it's hard to just make space up here, and we realize that. So that's why we're trying to juggle things. And we try to keep those lab populations within safe limits. This is a graph out of a report from the state of Texas, which covered data from about 1,000 schools of class size at the bottom and the rate of accidents on the upper left. And as you get past 20 to 24 in labs, you can see that that rate starts to go up exponentially. We want to try to watch that. So that's why we try to be careful about our lab populations, our sizes. And of course, you know, we're here for the globe, and we want our kids to go out of Arlington High prepared and understanding the issues and having some tools to feel empowered about dealing with those issues rather than feeling doom and gloom. So you saw, again, that in the assumption of time for the standards, we probably need to have more time somewhere, we're trying to figure out how to do that. And that's all, so questions?
Mr. Thielman.
So I just want to ask three questions. First of all, years ago, I recall a struggle to find science teachers. There was turnover in the science positions. And could you just kind of give us an update on how we're doing?
On turnover?
Yeah, how are we doing on retaining teachers and vacancies?
Well, it's a struggle. When we have a, when we have an opening because somebody leaves in physics or chemistry, and sometimes physics and chemistry, we have some choices to make that involve, do we need a physics teacher and a chemistry teacher? And do we need to hire two? Or do we need to hire who will fit that one bill, and maybe that person's a little more expensive? And we have to do that. These are critical areas, and they're not as easy to come by. I think I, you know, statistically, in the last round of advanced science course hiring, I probably had five or six appropriate candidates. That's not a lot. You know, considering after you interview them, there's some drop, by the way. So how are we doing that? We try to attract them, we listen to their needs. They're here, for the most part, I could say that the science teachers are here because they are passionate about teaching science. They're not here because they have their, an extra month during the summer. They're not here because they have, because they're making more money than they would make in industry. They're not here for a variety of reasons, they're here because they love to teach kids science. And so we have to listen to their needs so that they can do that well, and they, when they succeed, our kids will succeed. So we're, I think our turnover has been pretty slow lately. In fact, we've been expanding, trying to take care of some of that lab size issue. You know, and so we've been growing, and the people that are here, for the most part, are staying.
And I should have prefaced my questions by saying, this is a great presentation, so. This was a great presentation.
Oh, thank you.
And I should have begun that way. The next conversation, question I had is, could you talk a little bit about, you know, the MCAS scores for the high-needs students are not where we want them to be? I guess.
I'm sorry. The band sometimes distracts me.
Yeah, I'll talk louder. The MCAS scores for the high-needs students are not as loud, not as, not as, not as high as we'd like them to be.
That's right.
So I just would like someone, maybe either you or Dr. Bodie or Dr. Cheston, to talk about what's the strategy to help those high-needs students?
What we're doing, part of what we're doing is in our, using the Edwin Analytics, the analysis branch of the, all the data that the state collects, we can disaggregate that data. And so we disaggregate it by high-needs and all students. And we, and so we look at the data, and what we do is we analyze strands and questions. So we can, we can look at themes and saying, "Let's see, our high-needs students are having trouble with these kinds of questions. Let's see what we can do to bolster that part of our teaching curriculum." Because we know, we have the data, we do our DDMs and our common assessments, and we look at that data and we disaggregate it. So we're trying to get some insights into what areas they need more support in. That's one thing. We're also in our AP courses, AP produces a report every year called AP, I forget the term, AP Access. And they help us to analyze kids that have potential to go further in science, of all kids. You know, and so we specifically, we've had a grant that just ended this last year to try to increase high-needs kids' participation in AP courses. And we tried to bring those in by analyzing that data from the College Board. Sensitivity training and awareness, we're doing that. We're working with, you know, the rest of the administration to try to say, "What do these kids need? And why are there more difficulties? And how do we bridge those gaps?" So we're trying to look at that and make people aware of it. You know, what are the issues? Make teachers aware of them so that they can offer more supports. I think those are probably the general things.
Some of the challenges also that students have is the reading of the material on the tests.
Yeah.
And so we're really working as a curriculum team to identify those transferable skills so that the methods, you know, claims, evidence, that process, we're looking at, well, what do we call that in other subject areas? How do we help kids with close reading? How do we help them with informational reading? And use the same techniques across all subject areas in order to bolster those skills?
Yeah, we're really emphasizing that. In fact, a comment from a teacher who was, is an AP teacher here, and the AP tests were just a week or so ago. And so I said, "So how do the kids do? How do you think? How do they comment that they did?" And the kids' comments are, "Oh, there's so much writing on that test." It's not A, B, C, D. And the writing isn't, you know, describe this experiment. It's student A says this, and student B says this, who's right and why? You know, and so it's Claims Evidence Reasoning, and we're preparing the kids for that. And that's the way the new MCAS 2 will probably come out. And that's, that's one of the ways they're going to get at inquiry, is to have kids explain what they have experienced through inquiry by dialogue, so.
Dr. Allison Eppi.
I wanted to follow up on Mr. Thielman's question about the MCAS. Can you pull up the graph?
I can, absolutely.
So I agree that we certainly have room to improve, but I just wanted to point out that there was a significant improvement from 2014 to 2015.
Yeah, I mentioned that, that the proficient went up significantly enough, and the advanced didn't go down. And we pulled from that needs improvement.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, we're making progress. But we've got work to do. You know, I'd like that bottom-right graph to be the top-left graph at some point.
No, I agree, but I just thought that even, even, you know, that for one year is really impressive. And then, if you can go back to your class size graph, the second-to-last slide?
The what, which graph?
Second-to-last slide.
Oh.
Yeah. I'm wondering, what's the average class size in Arlington for science classes, looking at?
Well, that's, to answer that, I'd have to have a magic wand because in some sense, it's a strategy game. And so when we start the scheduling process, we know that students will change a bit. Some students, and rightfully so, want to challenge themselves, part of what you were talking about, Bill, sometimes over-challenge themselves and decide, you know, "I'll be better off if I'm in a different section." And those numbers change throughout the year. And so we start out with a really strong imbalance in our higher-level courses, very, very large class sizes, 25, 26, 27, 28 in a lab. And then we expect that over the course of the year, as kids make different choices, that those will level out to the 24 range, and that the other classes would start out very small. And make, you know, if you looked at it in the beginning, you might say, "How come we're offering classes that small?" But it's because they're going to fill up.
Okay.
And so we adjust that. And ideally, I would love to have our class, our lab classes at 20 or so, 22. You know, sometimes we don't make it because when we have nine sections of an honors-level class, the scheduling doesn't always go so that they're averaged out. Sometimes one class will be 28, and then another one will be 17. So we do our best to try to keep them in, to the mid-20s, but it doesn't always work.
Okay, thank you. And then the last question is kind of for either you or the administration, which is, I was glad that you brought up about sort of dual-counting time when you can do both ELA and science at the same time.
When what?
When you can do both ELA and science at the same time. And I'm just wondering, how do we count that time? I mean, do we actually double-count it when we're trying to figure out how much time they're spending?
We're working through that a bit, we're not there yet. And so those are all good questions, you know? In a sense, they're integrated time. You know, they're, they're both.
Larry's talking about the elementary level.
Oh, I'm talking about the elementary.
Yeah, just so we're clear, we're talking about.
Yes, that was only the elementary.
When we do that, we do that at the elementary level, and they'll be planning the summer in both social studies and science as they're doing their professional development. This informational topic could be, I was at a professional development experience this week on Tuesday. Grade five does something called Clean Water. If that matched, that was, that's their reading unit, that's not their science unit. However, it could tie into their science unit, or we might say, "Well, that's not fifth-grade science, that might be fourth-grade science." And so then we move it down to fourth grade. So there's going to be a lot of work done on that integration this summer.
But when we count things, do we actually count, it counts the minutes for both science and for ELA? Or, I mean, I'm not trying to suggest.
We haven't gotten that far yet.
We don't, we haven't gotten that far, right. We don't know, it's a new issue. And I think other people around the state are experiencing the same thing because there's just so much to do, there's so much on the plates of these teachers that we have to figure out smarter ways to let them do really good things and not be frustrated about it and not give up on some of it.
Mr. Hinder.
Thank you for this and all the work that you do.
Oh, thank you.
The elementary teacher in me, your sixth slide, the grade-three physical science, the pieces you brought. I can remember having students, science lends itself to a lot of projects, hands-on, and assessing some of my students, I figured I had a future, Enrique Fermi, or, great science is coming. But when they had to take a written test and to show these skills made by the state and stuff like this, it becomes very abstract for them, and very, very difficult. I'm hoping through you and other teachers, when they come up with the tests on these standards, there's some way of getting a kinesthetic or a hands-on way for these children to evaluate. Because in the classroom, at the elementary level, and even at the high school level, in chemistry and stuff, they learn these things. Yes, they're writing down responses and stuff, but asking the detailed questions to show evidence and stuff, often the child can do it by showing you.
Right.
And having the tools that they were using initially. Yes, they transferred it to their notebook and writing and stuff, but it's more real in the real world. So I guess what I'm asking you.
I appreciate that. And I assure you too, that we are doing that in our own classes. The struggle comes with the standardized state testing.
Exactly.
In our own classes, it would be very easy for an elementary teacher to come up and say, "Hey, you know, tell me about these five plants here, how come one's wilted?" And in a sense, that's both a performance assessment and maybe a summative assessment as well. And so we're, and we're doing that in our classes.
Again, my concern is, and hopefully you, as a director, will have some influence on the state to let them know.
Oh, we're trying.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Awesome.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You, if you would like, you know, these are very rich resources. You know, if you want to look at them, take them home, just bring them back. And, you know, we're not going to use them anymore this year, so you can just, you know, leave them somewhere.
These ones are so new, I'm afraid to look at them.
I'm afraid.
Yeah, yeah, it could be your bedside reading for the next week, you know? Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
I've got a book here and I learned something.
Yeah, great, great.
Great, thank you very much.
Well, that's what our kids do too. Thank you again.
Thanks, Larry. Okay, we are now 10 minutes behind, but not bad, not bad.
Math, too.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda are the Gibbs decisions. And what I want to do for both of these votes is, before we propose a motion and discuss a motion, I want to get sense of the committee about whether we are ready to take these votes or not. So I've quickly got that sense.
Thumbs up, thumbs down?
This is about the Gibbs configuration question. Okay, it sounds like, okay, this is, that's a good way to do it. So we are ready to take this thing, so let's, we need a motion on the table. Mr. Thielman.
Move that the Arlington School Committee endorses Dr. Bodie's recommendation to configure the Gibbs facility as a sixth-grade school.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Thielman, seconded by Mr. Schlickman, and.
Just a question?
Yes.
Is endorse the word R to go forward with a sixth, Dr. Bodie's recommendation? I thought we, I thought we had already endorsed this a month or so ago.
Yeah.
No, this is specifically about the configuration.
Right, no, what I'm saying.
We didn't, we didn't say anything about the configuration yet.
We voted the Gibbs, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we haven't said anything yet.
But.
Yeah.
So.
I just recommend change the word endorse to go forward with the superintendent's recommendation for sixth-grade.
So go forward, friendly amendment?
Move forward with, yes.
Move forward, friendly amendment to move forward rather than endorse. Okay.
So move forward.
Okay, discussion of the motion. Mr. Carden.
Thanks. So I just want to emphasize that we're choosing between two good options. And my vote on this motion should not be interpreted as any concern with the sixth-grade option being, you know, potentially being a very good thing and a very successful thing for our students. While I greatly respect the preferences of the school administration and the Odison teachers about the sixth-grade option, I also respect the preferences of the parents who responded to the survey, who attended the forum in January, and who I spoke to while I was running for this seat, who do prefer the two school, two middle schools option. I'm not voting against this motion because I think the two school, two middle schools option is necessarily better than the sixth-grade-only option. I don't think we can make that determination with any certainty. But between two good options, I'm choosing to join with many parents who prefer the two-middle-school option.
Okay. Mr. Schlickman.
I think the preponderance, the evidence overwhelmingly supports the Gibbs sixth-grade option. One reason certainly is equity, and it wouldn't be intentional. We talked about this last night, did we go look at towns with two middle schools? And my esteemed colleague, who works in Lexington, described the accidental inequity in two schools that are identically sized. We would be setting up a small middle school and a large middle school. And that would breed inequity in that there are programs that we would not be able to offer in the smaller school. And there are climate issues that we would have in the smaller, you know, the climate would be different in a smaller school than a larger school. And I don't want one end of the town to have one kind of school and the other end of the town to have a completely different kind of school. As we set up our elementary programs, we were very careful to bring equity to all of our seven schools so that there isn't a substantive difference in the education offered. And I don't think that we could provide that equity by having two, six, seven, eight schools. Number two, certainly the cost factor. The evidence shows that it would cost more to run a, two, six, seven, eight schools. And that in discussions with the Finance Committee, who said, "We really can't afford to add to the costs," we came back and said, "If we feel strongly enough that we prefer this, that we would make reductions in other programs in order to support a six, seven, eight over there." I see nothing that's educationally sound to support redirecting resources from other programs to turn the Gibbs into a six, seven, eight. One of the issues was transportation and walk, too. Now, I live a half a mile from the Bishop's School, and my neighbor, certainly walkable. Now, I live a half a mile from the Bishop's School, and my neighbor, it's certainly walkable, and I've walked to the Bishop's School often because it's a very pleasant little walk over there. But every day, when I'm leaving for work, my neighbor would be driving her child to the Bishop's, so that having a walk to, in, in theory, having a walkable school doesn't mean people are going to walk, and by virtue of the congestion that we have around elementary schools that are all walkable, I don't think that we're gonna achieve some sort of nirvana by having a more walkable configuration east to west. Now, there are going to be traffic issues, the traffic issues will indeed be less at the Odysseum because we'll be reducing the number of students going there. There will be more traffic in the Gibbs neighborhood, of course, because we're going from a, uh, tenancy situation to a full-blown school with 500 kids, and, uh, there, we will have two years to get a traffic plan out. We have successful traffic plans, we've worked with the tra, the TAC, uh, to solve our traffic issues, and if you live on the east side of town, you'll have one year of closed school and two year of schlepping across town, and if you live in the heights, you'll have one year of schlepping across town and two years of being closed, and it's not that big a town. It's five square miles, and I know that traffic in the center can be a little unnerving at times, but, um, you know, we do live in an urban environment. The evidence is so strong for doing the sixth-grade school and the, um, and no matter which configuration we go to, we will have challenges that we will need to meet, uh, but, uh, we will be able to move forward, we will be able to meet the special needs issues, we will be able to meet the traffic needs, uh, and we just have to do this, we need to go forward with the Gibbs six.
Do you hear? Other thoughts? Dr. Allison P.
I didn't think of preparing a speech. I'll be voting for the Gibbs six, um, but in doing so, I'm not trying to, I, I know that we've heard from many parents who would also prefer a six through, a second, six through eight school there. Like Mr. Schlickman, I feel that the educational benefits, the cost benefits, um, and the equity, actually, I didn't put them in the right order. For me, it's the equity is first, education is second, and then financial is a necessary but is just definitely a distant third. All of these are why I feel it's important to choose, to go with the Gibbs six option. But I very much want to hear over the coming year as we plan and, and begin to renovate, how we're going to address the concerns that are raised, especially the special education population, and how we're going to make this the best possible experience for them. Second, any other students who will have issues with the additional transition, which we're going to then be creating, um, and then finally, the impact on the parents or on the people who, the local community in terms of traffic and, and the other issues. And I think that there's a lot of things that we can do towards all of these. I did some research over the last few days, found a government website which lists schools that you can search by sizes. There's almost 120 in the U.S. that are sixth-grade only. Of those, um, over, almost 70 of them are over 300 students or more, and so I think are fairly comparable to what we're setting up, and I think that we can start reaching out to some of these other schools and find out how did they achieve, not necessarily the traffic we're gonna have to deal with, you know, that, that's site-specific, but the things like special education and dealing with transitions, other people have grasped with these problems, let's find out how they've done it and if we can get any ideas. So, that's how I'm going to vote and why I hope that community members who have concerns about this choice will continue to reach out to us and tell us why so that we can address their concerns and, and solve the problems, especially before we open the school.
Mr. Thielman.
So I'll be voting for the sixth-grade option. Uh, I think there are pluses and minuses to both the sixth-grade option and the six-through-eight option. The, the one thing I'll say with the sixth-grade option is that this is a, this will be a new experience for the town of Arlington. We're creating a new school and a new model, and it's something this district hasn't done since we reconfigured the middle school 25 years ago, whenever that took place. So it's a new, uh, moment for the town, and it takes a, it takes a, uh, you know, maybe a different set of skills than we've used in the past to solve, uh, problems and challenges. So I hope that we, um, do what Kersey suggested, look at a lot of different schools, hope we think creatively, I hope we look at, uh, I know we're looking at Needham and everything that Needham's doing, and I hope we use, uh, the talent of the people in the building, and that we, uh, think very critically and that there's a lot of good creative tension in the process between teachers, administrators, parents, staff, because that, that'll lead to the creation of something wonderful, which I think we wanna do. But this is a new experience for the town of Arlington, and part of the reason why I'm voting for it, because I think it's good for us as, as a district to embark on something new, but it has to be understood that it's brand-new and it's something people haven't done before, most of us haven't done before. So, I'm voting yes, and, um, I think it's an exciting moment with a lot of work out of us.
Who else? All right, I'm just gonna say a couple things, um, which is that I think if we had unlimited money and unlimited space, we'd create eight equally-sized elementary schools and two equally-sized middle schools, and they'd feed into the high school, um, that my decision is partly because of the constraint of our buildings, but that I think with that constraint comes some opportunity, uh, to really create a unique transitional space between the relative protected environment of elementary school and the more difficult environment of seventh and eighth, a middle school experience, um, and I look forward to the kinds of, um, opportunity that this presents. I also have to say that I've been in several rooms of parents who were initially opposed to this idea and who, after discussion, especially with educators, um, sort of came around to supporting it, but the initial thought was, was no, um, and then through discussion sort of changed their mind, and that was very, very influential in my decision. I'll be voting yes for this.
Yeah, wait, one more-
Yes, Mr. Thielman.
So I, I just, as a side point, you know, one, one thing that, well, why don't we get too far, too far ahead of things, but one thing to think about, actually, is to be hiring a principal a year in advance of the opening of the school, so there's somebody, um, drive in the process a year in advance, so. I didn't mean to throw the, that in the budget discussion right now, but that's really how you would, that's how you would start a new school. You'd have the academic leader on, onboard a year in advance of opening.
Mr. Hanner.
Just to go along with what Mr. Thielman said, it is a new school to some degree, it will be a new principal to some degree, but we have teachers already in place, so I would, and, and I'm sure you, you've thought of it, uh, I've seen other schools do it, the teachers are actively involved, to, to start that new person off with a very positive thing. We, it is new and it's pieces of, of what we've got, so it is very unique, as you said. Thank you.
Great, okay, so, uh, should we take a roll call vote?
No.
Roll, no, just take a?
Call a vote.
Okay, so all those in favor, please signify by saying yes, or aye.
Aye.
Yes.
And yes for myself, all those opposed? Mr. Carden? And that is it. Okay, um, actually, I'd like to introduce a motion, a second motion, um, to direct the town GIS department and the Transportation Advisory Committee to study what I think is a very serious issue of traffic, especially because we're talking about eastbound traffic during rush hour, and to come, um, back to us and to the school department with some ideas. So, discussion on the motion, or comments, yes? Mr. Carden?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think, I think we also have to look at it as to what we can provide as far as busing, I mean, if we can provide particularly for the sixth grade, you know, there, there are a lot more sixth graders, I, I think there's not a lot more, but there, the, the sixth graders from al, almost all of Dallin, Pierce, some of Stratton, some of Brackett are out of the two-mile zone. So, I, I think if we take a first look about how many kids are gonna be bused, where they're coming from, then we can provide some additional data to that.
Right, I think that's already begun. Mr. Hanner.
Correct me if I'm wrong, don't we have to, doesn't the state require us to budget for any chi, for the number of children that qualify?
Beyond the-
Beyond the two miles?
Yeah. And- Yeah, Dr. Bodie?
I've already started. In fact, done quite a bit of work on it, because we've looking at our current third grade and where they are distributed in town, and, and you're correct that, that we're going to have many more students that are beyond the two-mile in this, in this situation. It's hard to say yet, because one of the things we're looking at too is how close students are to, um, Mass Ave, um, in terms of how many students would probably choose that over and being reimbursed over being on a bus, because what I experienced is presently and has been for a number of years, is that more students choose reimbursement than they choose going on the school bus. Part of it is not wanting to get up so early, to be honest, you know, it's true, uh, because they get up, have to be at the bus stop early, and, um, they get to school earlier, and then they have to particip, they usually participate in AM, PM. So we are looking at this, we have, we've been, Adam Karoski and I have been looking at maps, walking maps, and we'll be, our director of transportation's been looking at bus routes, but we have time to plan on the plan, and I certainly want, um, input, and we'll, as we did before, we'll probably, once we get some, um, a place where we're ready to have some feedback, we wanna get feedback on, on the plan, and we'll probably wanna do a survey at some point just to get a sense of how many parents would prefer to carpool or go on Mass Ave bus or go on the school bus, and, and look at, look at that.
So, so just to clarify, um, the school department is responsible for anybody who lives over the two miles, but if someone lives 1.9 miles, they're unlikely to walk, and what we want to make sure is that those kids don't get driven individually in cars. And so I'd like, that's why I'm putting forth the motion to sort of direct the town to GIS department and Transportation Advisory Committee to sort of look at those kinds of issues. Yep, Dr. Allison P.
First, I'm not sure we had a second on the motion.
Oh, we did, sorry.
Second.
Well, I will-
A discussion.
Okay, thanks.
I, I will make the motion for the purposes of you're requesting a motion out there, Madam Chair.
Okay, so-
The Chair requested a motion.
I can't put a motion out.
You can.
You can.
You asked for it, though. All right. We're splitting here.
All right, Karen, is that, is that clear to you?
Yeah, that's what I was-
Yeah, okay.
So, are you gonna say Paul or do you-
Uh, sure, fine, Paul and Dr. Allison P.
And he intercepted.
Okay, Hanner, second, yes.
My second point is, I'm not sure we can direct the town to do anything. We can ask.
We can ask, yes, right, oh, I'm sorry, yes, you're right. We can ask.
Superdign to ask.
We can ask, yes, thanks, thanks, that's what we'll do. Yes, um.
Anyway.
I mean, frankly, this was actually something that, um, Mr. Chaplin said we should maybe ask him, officially ask him.
That's fine.
Yes, Mr. Schlickman.
I, I think the other thing we should ask, uh, at this point is for the, uh, Transportation Advisory Committee to look at things like one-way patterns and, and, and things we can do to enhance traffic flow and safety around the school. I mean, ideally, you've got streets that are one-way.
Those are one-way, they're all one-way around there.
Both one-way, but they're both one-way, so that if you're bringing a school bus down the street, the bus is on the wrong, the door is on the wrong side, and the kid would have, the kids would have to cross in front of the bus.
That's right.
Right.
So that, to flip one of those would possibly enhance safety, um, uh, for, for kids traveling on the bus.
Or at least you needed, or at least you need a driveway around the school.
Or something.
Something, they should look into it.
Yeah, okay, so, I mean, it's, there's a lot of issues to involve. Ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, so our next item, um, I also want to get a sense from the committee whether we are ready to vote to take the Gibbs at a surplus or not.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, uh, so actually, um, so Mr. Schlickman?
I'd like to make a motion.
Well, that, before the motion, I actually wanna get sense from the committee about whether we're ready to do this, this vote, yeah.
Absolutely, yeah.
I, I thought we already did.
No.
I mean-
To take the Gibbs out of surplus?
The official.
We have not yet voted.
We, we haven't done the official vote yet, and, and I'd like to make the motion, which we can then discuss.
So-
You got a majority already.
What, we're ready? Okay, okay, great, um-
I move that the Arlington School Committee declares that we require the use of the Gibbs School for educational purposes, uh, no later than July 1, 2017, and that the Arlington School Committee requests that the town of Arlington notify all tenants of the Gibbs School that their leases will not be renewed after their termination on June 30th, 2017.
Okay, second?
Second.
Mr. Hanner, second? Okay, discussion on the motion. Yes, Dr. Allison P.
So I had asked in previous meetings whether there was any necessary legal language that we needed to use. Is this it, or we're just guessing?
We were told that we just need to-
We were told that we don't need anything specific.
State this basically, and that-
Okay, yeah.
If, 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 if council receives this and, uh, quest, uh, needs something in addition, I'm sure we could revote it, but based on the conversations we had earlier in this, in the process, that's all we need to do, uh, which directs the things to go down the rest of the way.
Yeah, yeah, as far as I understand, that's all. We don't need anything very complicated.
So, it, it may be even more detailed than we need to, but I, I just wanted to cover the basis.
Okay.
Uh, it, it's important that we do this, the tenants already, you're now finding alternate places to be, uh, so it, on one level, it's gonna happen naturally, but I think that the sooner we say that we're, we're moving forward, we're gonna do this, uh, we need this facility, uh, you know, why, why delay? Well, let's, let's just move this forward.
Mr. Hanner.
If we have a building, we're no longer using it, we declare it surplus, then the town has control over it. Up till then, they don't.
Right.
This, we did that with Gibbs X amount of years ago. Right now, we're asking, asking with this vote for the town to take it, uh, give it back to us for our use. So, that's what we're doing in this motion, is making a request to the town. Once the town does that, we will then have, uh, legal, uh, ownership or, or control of the building. So we're, we're basically requesting it.
Do I, do I say, I, um, was not in favor of taking this vote at this time, just because I thought it, it made sense to hear from the voters, um, I mean, in terms of, just the timing seemed, seemed odd to me, but, um, but it seems to be the consensus of the committee, so that is what I defer to, yeah. Okay, any more, any more comments? Yes?
You have the, this language, right? You have Paul's language?
Let me get it.
I, I just emailed it to you.
Okay.
And we don't need, so Doug Hyam said, this is-
No.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And I'm gonna abstain.
Abstain?
Yes. Yes, Dr. Allison P.
Can I ask through the Chair, Dr. Chesson?
Yes.
Was it you who was telling me about Concord changing to a six, seven, eight model?
I was.
Oh, you were. Could you just, I didn't wanna bring this up because I didn't wanna suggest we were making our decision because of it, but I thought it was an interesting sidelight on our decision-making, just what's going on in Concord.
Well, they have two middle schools, one's a little bit bigger than the other, and they have decided, my understanding is they're gonna have to defer a year because of the size of the class that will be entering, but they're going to go to a six and a seven and eight, and it's not about enrollment, they just think that would be a better model for Concord.
Typical Concord, trying to keep up with Arlington.
We're so ahead of 'em.
With everything except the budget.
Just trying to keep up with us.
It may change, they're looking for a new superintendent, I, I don't know where that will stand, but that currently-
I thought it was interesting that it came up at this point.
Yes, yeah.
Lots of opportunity to talk to each other about ideas.
We do.
We do.
Yeah, great.
Assistant principals in every building.
Okay, now we're early, great. So the next item on the agenda is to vote to renew the Human Rights Commission Committee members, and we are fortunate that the current members have all elected to continue their appointments, so if it is, if we are in agreement, we can go forward with that. If you remember the last time we voted, I wasn't here, but for Christine, so who did we vote for? For Sharon Grossman to continue, and I, at the time, I actually didn't realize how many other people's appointments were up at the very same time, so these are the remainder of the people. Mr. Schlickman?
I move reappointment.
Great. Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Starks. Mr. Schlickman, discussion?
Do you want to say their names?
Yeah, I'll say their names. Great, okay.
I was just unaware that we get to select, we appoint all the members of this committee?
No, we do not. From what I understand, the board of Schlickman appoints some people and the town manager, not town manager.
And all our appointees are.
John Leoni, town moderator.
I guess what, then my next surprise is that our appointees are all at the same, exact same time, they usually stagger, but that's fine, thank you.
They actually are staggered by a couple of months, but it's all around, and I think that's probably the reappointment time, you know, one was February and one, which is delayed, and one was April, but they're all around the same time. Okay, so let me read them out, there's Christine Carney, Gonda D. Vigia, Nick Minton, and Marissa Brigger, Brigitte.
Bridget.
Is it Bridgette?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thanks, Bridgette. So I think we are lucky to have dedicated volunteers, like many things in Arlington, these are volunteers who are giving up their time to work on this important issue, and I think, I think we're, we're lucky to have such dedicated volunteers. So, all those in favor of reappointing those four members, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's unanimous vote. Okay, so then there's the calendar update. Mr. Schlickman?
First, I'd like to move the calendar up.
Okay.
And then we want to. Move approval.
Move approval.
Move approval, okay, so moved approval by.
Second.
Mr. Schlickman, seconded by Mr. Hayner, I think we should have, this is first.
This is first.
This is first read. Oh, so that's not.
And I'd like to move an amendment.
Okay, so we don't move first read, is that right? Is that, okay, so we're not moving it, yeah.
Okay, I'd like to offer an amendment to the calendar.
Okay, so actually, do we want to, I want to actually have Dr. Bodie just give a couple of words, is there something that you want to say?
I think.
Before, and then we'll get to that.
Okay. First of all, let me just review some of the key things, I don't think it hurts to reiterate this, is that there's a couple of big changes next year, and, and the first of that is our kindergarten. We are going to begin the first day for kindergarten just as we do for all of the students, except it's only going to be for an open house. And then half the kindergarten class will come one day and the other half on Wednesday, the other half on Thursday, and then the full group on Friday. And the reason for this change is that we've decided to do the screening in June. Before, when we had a delayed opening to the next week, that was because we used that week to do screening, but the concerted opinion of teachers and administrators is that they would, it'd be much better in terms of classes to be able to have that information earlier. Our preschool, however, does start the following Monday on the 12th. So, this calendar is very similar to previous years, but I will say that both the middle school and the high school will have an extra early release day. And the high school in particular needs an, an extra day in there because of all of the work facing it. And we'll talk more about that when we get to the MSBA decision yesterday, but there's a significant amount of work that they're doing, both in that area and some work that they've been committing to over the last year and a half on diversity issues in the school. So, however, Dr. Cheston has looked at the minutes and hours and we're fine, so that's not going to be an issue. The other thing I would say about the high school is that I have a schedule here that's very similar to last year, but Dr. Jangor has indicated that we, we might need to tweak the dates for the conferences, they may actually move them up and be in concert with the middle school, but I will have that for you during the course of the week and let you know that. The middle school has decided to move conferences earlier in the year, before, they used to have the conferences in December, but now they're going to be in November, and I think the, the reason for that is that they would like to talk with parents before the end of the term, rather than after the term.
Maybe influence it.
Huh?
Maybe influence it.
Yeah, but early, they, they think that earlier in the year makes more sense in, in the, in this. And because we're finding that every block is taken for a middle school teacher, they're just completely scheduled, that we're adding a little bit more time in one of the afternoons, so there's going to be two afternoons and two evenings for the middle school. And those are in early November, as you, you can see there, and, and I have to give Ms. Fitzgerald a lot of credit, we worked on the codes on this and finally we decided, probably the easiest thing, rather than coding this whole calendar up, which would make everybody a little crazy, is to actually list out the days of the early releases by level, and so it's just really clear what's, what's going to happen. And the other thing we tried to do is make it consistent, if we're going to have a conference early release, it's 11:15. If we're going to have just a regular professional development day, it's 1 o'clock. The difference being that 11:15 is going to have no lunch and 1 o'clock we'll have lunch. So, in terms of changes, those were the major, the major changes. We also decided again this year not to go into late April, May, and June for any, for any professional development. Once we hit those months, we're into testing and we want to give as much flexibility as possible. Next year's window for MCAS 2.0 will actually begin in earlier April, I think it's April 6, isn't it? And it will go through May. So, and it makes sense in terms of pedagogy, educational goals, to have more of our professional development earlier in the year. The one that we have scheduled, and I'm not sure which one we'll do it, whether we'll do it in March or April, we need to have some early release time, all levels, to do any kind of training that might be necessary for the new 2.0. So that's, that's part of it, another reason, is that we wanted to make sure we had that time. So, those are the main highlights of, of the calendar, otherwise is very similar to what we've had in previous years. Now, I know you have some discussions you need to make about the meeting time for school committees.
So actually, can I just ask one question, clarification? You said that the high school is going to move to the similar time as the middle school?
Well, we don't know that. Right now, they're scheduled.
But I assume it's not the same day if we're looking, it's, it's similar timing, is that, is that the thinking?
Maybe the same days. Right now, right now, what they did last, this last year, and it seemed to work really well, in October, they had an 11:15 dismissal for afternoon conferences, they stayed through and had evening conferences the same night. And I understood that that went pretty well, and then they had one more evening conference, and so that is how it's scheduled right now for the, for the high school. So, the conferences for the high school are late October, the conferences for the middle school is early November, and elementary is staying the same in December, because I wanted to have conferences after the first progress report. So, that's where we are.
Questions, and I know you have an amendment. Any questions?
I have something that I want, I questioned, the other day, Saturday, when we had our retreat, we talked about potentially two retreats coming up, is that something you'd want on the calendar? I'm asking the group.
We like it on my.
We just announced them ahead of time once we've decided, that's fine.
Yeah, we, we talked about changing how we did our meetings. Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay, Mr. Schlickman?
Okay. I didn't catch this when I had my initial conversation with the Chair about the calendar, she was very gracious to ask me what I thought and if there were any conflicts on the calendar. And I didn't spot it then, but I did spot it when I saw the calendar in Novus, in that this iteration doesn't have a second February meeting, which, which results in the fact that we'd have 19 scheduled meetings and our policy dictates 20. There's another potential conflict in here, in that March 23 will be the League of Women Voters debate, and we were looking to move our meeting off of that date this year so that our candidate for reelection wouldn't need to make a decision between hanging out with us here and hanging out with the League of Women Voters, and I know that when we run for reelection, it's always good to have friends and, you know, in the room. So, so that, in order to rectify both, that we'd get the, the third meeting and we'd avoid the, the, get our 20th meeting and then avoid the issue of conflicting with the League of Women Voters, that we delete the scheduled meetings for March 9 and March 23, and instead add the meetings for March 2, March 16, and March 30.
Three in March.
But that, you know, think of the March 2 as being February 30.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I actually have a similar kind of, we have to, we have to discuss and vote in this, I have a similar kind of suggestive change. We do it all together?
Well, yeah, I mean.
Which is that, I know I won't be available on December 22nd, and if you look at the calendar, it looks like we could easily shift that a week earlier and have a December 1 and a December 15 meeting.
The first has a lot of conflicts for us with a conference.
Oh, it does?
Yep.
Okay.
Maybe we could do 8th and 15th?
And the other possibility is I'm just not there.
We've done that in the past.
That's fine, I'm just not there.
We've done two weeks in a row in December in the past, so the 8th and the 15th.
Do 8 and 15.
There are always these conflicts towards the end.
Yeah, okay, I mean, again, it could also mean that I, I don't have to.
Budget season, so it's always good.
Yeah, okay, so.
I will tell you that the 15th is the elementary evening conference night, but, but I don't know.
Anybody have that?
Country parents who have to go to conference.
Other than Lynn.
There's two afternoons as well.
Right, right.
So Lynn, you'll get priority picking that night.
Well, I mean.
Yeah, if only.
The other option is I'm just not here, and that's, that's a perfectly plausible option if that just makes more sense.
You know, that's a tough day because everybody's off on holiday.
It's right almost before the holidays, that's, that's why it's potentially a tough day, but.
I'd say that that's, that's a great idea to do the 8th and the 15th if we can.
Okay, but elementary conferences, that can be initiated, yeah, Dr. Allison.
Just looking at the calendar and remembering what was going on then, the problem is that that's kind of hitting peak budget season when we're bringing. And so, I remember we were having to schedule people in and there was concern that things were going too early, so I'm just a little concerned if you're moving, you know, if you're shifting both meetings forward.
That there's not enough time for you to prepare things.
It may, yeah, it may mess up budgeting, but I don't.
We're only shifting one at this point.
You know, we can kind of set the schedule now and then adjust as we get closer.
We can also keep it as is and.
Adjust when we get there.
Mr. Hayner can take over on that day, it's not a problem.
It doesn't, no, I think it's better to try to get, to schedule it so all seven of them.
Have it on the calendar right away so everybody does.
But I'm just saying.
Okay, so let's, all right, so we'll, we'll put that on the calendar and if we need to, we'll shift it because of budgets.
We do 8th and 15th, but if it gets.
If, because of budget issues, then we need to shift him.
Nobody's going to want to come in and do, and do a budget presentation on a 22nd, let's put it this way, our employees would not be better.
But another option is might be the 20th.
We could also, right, I mean, we can, we can always do things on a, on a Tuesday or something, it was another possibility. Yeah, okay. Yeah, Dr. Allison.
Just to speak to Mr. Schlickman's comments, what I've brought up, there weren't 20 meetings scheduled before, and what I was told was, well, we'll have meetings over the summer and that those will count into the 20, and I'm just saying that this is what has been said before, so.
Got it, I do not do that. Okay.
Well, we're only obliged to schedule 20 and if we decide we don't want to have the last meeting in June, we don't have to.
We don't currently schedule a meeting necessarily in the summer, although it has happened. Yeah, Ms. Hayner?
If we stick with our current calendar, we'll have 21 this year because last Saturday was a school committee meeting.
Right, and if we add extra things, that's true. That's true.
We're talking about potentially doing one or two more in the fall.
Does that take some pressure off of not needing to add another one in March?
Well, it's just a busy time for us because we're finishing up the budget and doing a lot of work.
So it's worth it keeping it?
It's a busy time.
Okay, so why don't we keep it, maybe we could also, again, adjust it.
So you're saying we're going to keep the 2nd, the 16th, and the 30th in March?
Yes.
Right, so there's, so let's do this all as one motion, I guess, right? So the, so the March 2, 16th, and 30th, and then December 5th and 19th.
December 5th, you mean 8th and 15th?
Oh, sorry, I'm, I'm looking at the wrong thing, I'm, yeah, December 1st and, oh, 8th and, 8th and 15th, 8th and 15th, sorry, I was looking at the wrong month. 8th and 15th. Any more discussion on those? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I want to sort of request to the superintendent that when the middle school and high school and elementary school sort of schedule significant events, that we ideally try to find a way for them not to schedule these big, significant events during school committee meetings, if it's possible, that we sort of get a sense from them.
Well, guess what?
Conflicts already.
Yeah, I'll have to have a conversation with, I just got this information from the, from the middle school, they wanted to have their curriculum night on the 8th of September. Let me go back to them, now that I know which night you want, let me go back to them and see if we can get a different night.
Yeah, why don't we, I mean, we just need to sort of disseminate this early and widely.
This raises a question, you know, you know, parents have, I think it's germane to the calendar, so just bear with me, parents have, some parents have said over the years that there's so many, there's sometimes there's like, you know, AHS, there's, there's events going on in multiple schools on the same night. Do you ever, do you monitor that, Kathy, I mean, you guys, do you guys try to control it, do people submit events to you in the central office and?
No, they, they don't really, we have a central calendar now, I think it's going to be easier than it ever has been before, because if you look on the website, we're now have a central calendar where all the major events and how we've defined it for everybody is that if you have an event that would potentially involve people beyond your school, now, as soon as we define it this way, I'm not sure, I think we would still put a major event like curriculum night at the middle school on that central calendar on the website, because then what we'll do is we'll see that that hits a school committee night.
Yeah.
We just didn't really have that tool before, but we do now have it.
Or that that hits another night that some other school is having. You know, Addison has the curriculum night and, and the high school has their big concert.
I think we'll hit the, those, but we have to really be conscious of it, but the thing is, if Bishop had a chorus night, and that's Bishop community, and it's not going to affect anybody else, it won't hit that central calendar, it'll hit the Bishop calendar. So, it's something that we'll have to work at and think about how we're going to, it's challenging.
Unless the Bishop parent has a child at the high school.
Then.
I mean, that's the same.
So that's the question.
Obviously, a Bishop event is not going to conflict with a Thompson event.
Right, right.
But if you, vertical articulation, we can, once an elementary stakes something out of major, any other elementary can pile on that.
Vertical articulation, that was what I was looking for. Well, then that's incumbent upon the middle and the high school to get their oar in the water.
That's, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think it'd be nice to collect this information, even if we don't necessarily ask people to ship, but just to sort of collect it.
Let me go back to the middle school.
It would be good to have, get all these dates.
Central calendar.
Yeah, at the beginning of the year and say, okay, look, is there any we can move a couple of things?
Let's get your big ones on there and take a look at them.
It also might be helpful for the community to know what's going on, I mean, there's all these great, exciting things going on, so it'd be, you know, it could be PR too.
Yeah, we've talked about that, whether, how busy that central calendar would become, because the good news is, a lot is going on.
Right.
And then, that's the good news, but then when you try to organize it in one visual thing, that, that became problematic, and, and so we went the other direction, maybe we shouldn't, maybe we should just have everything that's going on in each slot.
Right.
At the very bottom of the calendar, there's a statement, online, it's two-thirds printed,
At the very bottom of the calendar, there's a statement, on mine, it's two-thirds printed, it says approved back in January, so.
Right.
I, well, no, I, I understand, but it, it's, it may give people the impression that this is the final, if they read it off Novus today, that it's been approved since January and stuff.
Well, some parts have been.
Right, we did approve the end of the last day.
I understand, I, I understand, but it, it doesn't qualify, I'm just suggesting, pull that off until we get, until we finally do it. Just a thought.
If we're commenting on other aspects.
I started it.
Yeah, you started it. I'm concerned about the parent, the kindergarten parents, especially those who are working and who aren't necessarily expecting half-days or no school day for their kindergarten students during that first week, and I'm wondering, first, are we making sure that they all know what's coming, and second, are we to arrange any help for them, like with the after-school programs or anything for those, that time when the kids are not in school? You know, because it sounds like they've got multiple hours when otherwise they would, you would think that they were there.
Well, the answer by notification, yes, and one of the, the nice things that is happening with our new registration process and software that we have, we have the emails for every kindergarten parent, sometimes multiple emails, and so we have a list serve, and we've, I've actually gone out just with information to kindergarten parents a, a couple of times already. So that is happening, they also, we have, we have the first introductory meeting on the same day for all elementary schools, it was discussed then. We're having meetings at each school for visits, and now we're gonna have screening, and it's discussed then. They're really being saturated with this. I will say that we haven't looked at the after-school programming because this is the first time we actually have had school in the first week, this, they, it could be considered a positive for parents because they will have two of those days that week with their child in school, which in previous years, they would have had no days that week.
But they may not know that. I mean, you know, they, if they didn't have a kindergarten student before, they may have just thought that the kid's just coming.
I see what you mean, yeah, yeah. Right.
True. That's, that's true. So, it's something I can ask the after-school programs if they could, the only issue is that the after-school programs are after-school programs. They don't run simultaneously to our, our school day.
Anyone else? Yeah, Mr. Siffen?
Yeah, just on the other note, in terms of major events happening, if we have, say, college night and the community ed, and the school committee all in this building on the same day, it's just traffic hell, and you can't park within 10 blocks of the school. So, another reason, even if it's something that we don't care about, I don't have a college-age kid, but boy, if there's college night on a school committee night, you know, some may, please pay special attention to, to the high, high school headmaster on his use of the calendar and facility use on school committee nights.
We do have to alert them more because they, they live in their world of high school, they're not looking to see when your meeting.
Right.
On a note, that was, was probably a high, it was, it was even the attendance, the participation was even more than the previous year, it was, a lot of people came.
Yeah, and if we have a hot topic on the agenda where we have people want to come, or we're gonna be talking about some important stuff, we're gonna be, you know, closing out citizens from participating in our meeting as well.
Good point, right, yep. Okay, so are we ready to, we're not voting on anything, this is our first read.
On the amendments?
Oh, we, well, we need to vote on the amendments, right?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry about that, okay, so, all those in favor of the amendment, of these amendments? Did we vote on it?
Aye, aye.
I thought we did.
And, what? I thought we had.
Did we?
Yeah.
I thought we had, okay, that's, yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, so we're not voting on the calendar though yet, because it's first read. So we're going back, and June 9th is gonna be our second read, and that will be it, that'll be our calendar. And I know policy is meeting before then, so there might be some discussion about school committee meeting structures as well. Okay, superintendent's report.
Two big announcements, of course, I got the press release out today, so I think it saturated the town with the media and parents and staff, so everyone knows that yesterday, the Massachusetts School Building Authority Board of Directors voted unanimously to invite Arlington High School into the eligibility period, that's the formal part of the vote. What, what's happening is that we're being invited to commence the eligibility period. We've been in the eligibility, but sort of in a limbo for the last few months, and the reason they did that, just so people understand, they accepted more people this year into the program than they have. More schools, 26, they've never gone, that, they've never invited that many at the same time. Well, as you can see from the documentation that's required during this period of time, they have to stagger it themselves, or they're not, they're not gonna be able to deal with the volume of, of work and the feedback that has to go on during this process. But it's very exciting, this is, it doesn't mean that there's not other steps along the way, and there are. Just because you get into the eligibility period, doesn't mean you get, go to the next stage, though I will say that their, if you want to say retention rate, the retention rate's really high, because they work with you, they want you to be successful as well. And usually there's some reason beyond anybody's control, it could be funding, and usually it is funding, where a, a town would have to stop, but that is really actually more rare. So this is a process we're gonna go through with MSBA, the first, so during this first period of time, there's a lot of documentation that needs to be given to MSBA, and adhere, we have to adhere to the schedule. The dates, I, I put in your, a Novus, what the deliverables are during this period of time. These number of dates out, these commence on June 8th. So, right now, we're invited, but we can do some, we're doing some work already, but you can't go beyond those dates. You can submit them earlier, you can even submit some of these earlier and, and quickly, but you can't go beyond those dates. And so that's, it's, it's very well laid out. The, the compliance certification, that, that one's not a particularly time-consuming one. There's going to be a lot of thought given to a building committee, but having said that, there are prescribed positions that MSBA requires, in fact, the form that I have to fill out has the names of those positions, you have to somebody who's certified in procurement, and, what?
I'm just figuring out nine months from now, where the, the local vote has to take place, I'm sorry.
The vote's taking place in June.
June 14th.
This is the vote for the feasibility?
It's, that, okay, it wasn't for the big money?
It's not for the big money.
Oh, okay, fine, okay.
It's taking place six days in.
Got it.
Dr. Alzambe?
No, no, no.
Dr. Bodie, when you say June 8th is the day it commences, do you mean that's, that's the day that the clock starts ticking? And we count 30 days from then?
Yes.
And all, okay.
Yes, that's the day the clock starts ticking.
Okay.
Exactly. So, we will be having some discussions, and we probably should have some discussions at an upcoming meeting on, on the building committee, and it's not a particularly large committee, and it's very prescribed, one of the things that we, we can add on, a couple of positions, and we did that with Thompson, we added on a parent representative to that committee. And it, we did not add on a teacher, I don't think we added on a teacher, no, but we had, we, we had everything that was prescribed, and then we had a parent representative.
Is there any prescription for committee members, parents, or teachers, or is that not part of the prescribed positions?
They're not part of the, those are add-ons, they're not, now, it's possible that you can get two-fers, that, you know, that might be a parent who, who fulfills the engineering requirement.
Right.
So that could happen. What we found with the Thompson Building Committee, that a number of members of the Permanent Town Building Committee fit some of those descriptions, and it, and it worked out well to have, working very closely with that committee. Now, they may not be as eager to join this because, talk about a lot on our plate, we, we have Stratton next year as we're working through this. We potentially will have an addition onto Thompson, we're going to have, we're gonna have sort of simultaneously to the Thompson, the renovation of Gibbs, and meanwhile, we're gonna be working on this huge project, which is gonna be significant. So it's huge, it's, it's a, it's a big.
And the, the building committee for the Thompson and the Gibbs is the Permanent Town Building Committee?
Yes.
Yes, so Stratton, Thompson, and Gibbs will all be overseen by Permanent Town Building Committee. So they have a lot that they're gonna be doing too.
Yeah.
That's different from this. That's different from this.
And that is different from this. Even though they recognize that, yes, Arlington, and actually, not all communities have these permanent building committees, we're quite, we're somewhat unique. They have a very prescribed layout of what the committee needs to be, for example, I have to be on it, or my designee, the principal of the building, a school committee member, the town manager, or his designee, that kind of thing. So it's very prescribed, and, but it is helpful to have people who fit the, the different, the different descriptors, and by the way, I can give you a copy of what the form looks like so you know, I'll get that, I'll get, send that over to you. So that we will be working on, then there's the educational profile questionnaire, this isn't the part that's the vision of the school, and how, you know, you heard tonight from our director of mathematics and, and science, and, and first of all, I, I have to say that I think people who listen understand what terrific leadership we have in these curricular areas, and that is enormously important for movement of a school district. And I think Mr. Carden made an interesting point, that, you know, you know, sometimes you might have to balance off the, the kind of leadership and also coaching, and, and maybe have class sizes creep up a bit, but the benefit is so terrific, and so at any rate, they're gonna be very much involved in this as well because, take science for example, we need to know what a flexible science lab would be, we need to know really how many labs we have, and just really, are we, we, do we want our labs to be configured both for physics and chemistry, but then now you heard about all the capstone classes. So, what will be the design, will we use the model design, and, and actually, how many do we need? We clearly do not have enough right now, let alone size. I think our science labs right now are at almost 100% utilization. Well, that's not, that's not even, it's really hard to schedule, and sometimes you have to hand-schedule just to make sure it happens. But at any rate, those are things that we'll be looking at, should science and math be adjacent? Despite what Mr. Weathers was saying about having science being at the pinnacle and in the center of everything, maybe that's not the best way. How should we have our maker spaces, where should our computer science be, our CAD courses, there's just a lot of adjacency and philosophy issues that are gonna have to really be, how many small group sizes do we have? How do, how do we want to deal with blended learning in the building? The list goes on and on, what?
It's time to start visiting some schools.
Yeah. Oh, yes, 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 yes.
Get some ideas.
We are, we definitely will, that'll be fun.
Yep.
Is, is there anything still in, you buy one of their, their already built schools or the cookie cutter?
The models? The, the school districts that use the models have land.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, land without anything already on it.
Land without anything on it, and you build start.
There were no, there were no vertical models.
Maybe cows, you know.
No.
Thank you.
Wow. Mr. Carden?
Yeah, I wanted to note, the, the required positions are, there's 11, so unless you get a twofer, the committee has to be at least 11 people.
Yep.
Belmont just announced their committee has 15 people, so it can be a sizable committee, especially for a project of this magnitude.
Yeah.
Right. And, and you also have to, yeah, 15 would be a good, a workable committee, you get much bigger than that, but even having said that, sometimes people can't always attend, and, so that becomes an issue, and given the length of time of this commitment, I, I think that there's going to be transitions on the committee over time, because most people aren't gonna think that a five- or six-year commitment is huge. And the, the Thompson Building Committee actually met toward the very end, even after Thompson been built, because we had to, we had to close up the project too. So, it's really a six-year commitment, that's not, it's probably not gonna happen, so they'll have to be, having a committee that's a little bit larger is an advantage because you might have sort of sta, something that's more staggered as you go forward. You need, you need some institutional history in terms of the discussions that go on, because you make, you do a lot of work at each one of the meetings. So that's what we're gonna do, and then enrollment, then we'll, the, the part that's going to be one of the most important besides the vote in June, probably the most important thing in this list of deliverables is enrollment. That is where we, we need to really, I, I, I know this is gonna be an issue, but again, we actually, as a community, have the evidence of Thompson. The calculator that they used, I didn't really predict, and I just got, I'll actually give you a copy of it, but I, I was just shaking my head, we got Nezdek's predictions for us, and they're so far off and so low, it's, they're not even accurate for this year. So, I know this is gonna be a big issue because, first of all, the size of the building, the reimbursement you get is really related to that number.
Mr. Siffen had something?
Yeah, I, I think the, the two things we have to go by, one, I think the, the McKibben report is really a high-quality report that, that the state should look at seriously, and I'm pretty comfortable with the numbers going forward, especially because, at least in the near term, we know who's in the system now, and we know what we're projecting in the elementary and how it will flow, so high schools are usually easier to predict than elementaries. The second thing is, is, you know, when, when I think about planning this building out, we're not, excuse me, we're not just planning it out for our opening date in 2020 or 2021 or whenever we, we were able to finish this, we're gonna have this building as the heart and soul of our operation for the next 50 years, and, you know, with a, with a STEM orientation going forward, we're in a technological society in a high-tech town, so, you know, it would behoove us to get somebody who's really got a tech savvy and has got that crystal ball to be playing on this committee as well, to figure out, yeah, what are we gonna need in 20 years to, to, to have a facility that will meet our, meet our needs?
Right. In fact, I have a recommendation on that, I, I recently went to hear Barbara, and here is the, who was the person who founded High Tech? High School in, in California, and it was, it was a fascinating presentation, and then I spoke with them after, because that's one of my big concerns, is that, you know, an elementary is an elementary, but the high school is, this is a really different situation, how, how do we get the building to match our, our vision and our curriculum with an eye to 10 years out, 20 years out? What, what, what should we be thinking about? And, an architect, while they might have some very creative ideas how to create the space, they first have to know what kind of space you want. And so I think that in this project, we're gonna need to get some consultants along that line. And so even though there's gonna be this building committee, I would like to have much more reach out in terms of getting ideas on this.
Also, we as a committee have a problem with the town, we have town offices in this building, which are not either deciding, are they gonna stay? If they do, we own it 100% in this thing, the, the whole sixth floor is another one of those places, and Monody Preschool, so.
Preschool, they probably will reimburse.
They've changed their.
Okay, they're changing them, that's great, that's great to know, but the, the other aspects of that, and I mean, with all the added wonderful open space that we have in this town, we're gonna, if the decision is made, does the town want to buy space in this building 100%? If the answer is no, where, where does everybody go? I mean, we have our committed spaces that we need, but there's also town spaces down on the first floor and other, so that's sitting on the outside of this consideration, but when we decide to, what kind of building do we want? We gotta, that's a parallel question, set of questions.
Lots of those questions.
Yeah, lots of questions.
I mean, let, let's say that we look at the, the space we have and we move the sixth floor operation, and the folks downstairs, the town office is out, and take the space that maybe ACA is gonna take over the central school and flip that out, because it'd be better for them to be tied with us, and we get a performing arts center, or maybe the town wants to build a parking garage in the back of our area that we, our, our kids would pay for, and people who work for the town or work downtown would, would use as well as, as a revenue basis, so lots of performing arts center, lots of things.
Senior center.
I'm dreaming.
Yeah, dream big.
So the question I have is, so in the educational profile questionnaire, which is a 90-day period that commences on June 8th, what is it, do we have to, we have to answer all the questions about what we're gonna do?
No, 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 this is more, no, no, but we have to have that before feasibility, during the feasibility.
Right, that's what I mean.
No, this is a questionnaire about our programs, it's more of a nuts and bolts kind of question.
Okay, so it's not, it's not, this is what we're gonna do in technology?
No, 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 no.
Okay, 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 that's what I wanted to clarify. That's what I wanted to clarify.
So I have a question. I know that we're not allowed to do the feasibility until we get the go-ahead from them.
We have to get a formal vote from the board to go ahead.
To go ahead, and I know that that formal vote is, would currently be scheduled a year from now. Is there any, did you get a sense if we could move it up? If we did all the other things earlier?
They said if you finish this all in a month, you could do it.
Okay, great, awesome. That's good.
To work.
But realistically.
We're going to fill the high school in 13 months, like the Empire State.
Yeah.
Artist's meeting is next week.
Well, I'd clearly like to make it faster.
So I mean, so that was my question, is what is, a lot of this is going to hit over the summer. So what is your, your plan to do all this? And I did want to note that there were three schools that were approved in January that moved into feasibility study at this, at this last meeting. Their elementary schools are much simpler, but you can move along much quicker than the half a year.
Yeah, that's great.
Absolutely. And the sooner we, there's no point in taking this part out longer than it needs to be because honestly, I think the feasibility part's going to take longer than, yeah. So we're 12-month employees, we'll be around doing it. Most of this stuff is administrative kind of. Ruth Bennett, who is the director of facilities for the town, went with us to MSBA because she wanted to hear what, you know, what we needed to do. And so they have a, they have forums online that they're, we're now going to be opening up that we couldn't before. And, but she's known about this for a couple of months, and so they've already been starting to gather the information. It's, in some ways, that's, in terms of lengthy report, that's the most lengthy on this one because you have to give a history of all of your maintenance for this school. Well, Mark Miano fortunately is a walking encyclopedia of everything that's been done and who did it, when it was done. It's amazing. So we're going to have to, we're going to have to channel his, do a download and all of that. He did the Thompson one too, so she's not going to do it by herself, but it's a long report.
So I would say, oh, sorry, I jumped in. The real important thing in this whole process is, is the enrollment.
It's enrollment. This is number one in this.
We went through this with the Thompson and, you know, we had a good discussion with them and they predicted 330, we predicted only 420, I think, back then. So we weren't, we were lower. So I think, you know, I would just sort of keep the committee informed of all the dialogue with the MSBA on the enrollment, on the enrollment especially, because I think we, you know, we want to make sure we get it right.
I know, and it's, it's going to be a challenge. I would like to have Dr. McKibben do an update this summer because, for example, we're going to be over 500 in next year's kindergarten class already. This is May.
Right.
Because you're talking about, because basically, the case that needs to be made to the MSBA is that we really need a 2,000-person high school capacity for 2,500 persons.
See, his numbers were in the 1,600s, but I think that is going to be too low.
Right, that's what I mean, because you're keeping 500, 500, 500, it's a 2,000.
I think we have got escalated at least a couple hundred.
And we have building projects that may be built in town. We got to emphasize that, I mean.
So that's, that's, that's the real debate.
That is the real debate of this first module. You've got it right.
Yes, so.
Dr. Osanti?
What's meant by the online enrollment projection and enrollment certification executed?
The online enrollment projections?
And the second thing after that, enrollment certification.
Well, once you come to an agreement, that's the number you work on going forward.
So the first one, the online enrollment projection, that's the number that we have to, I mean, that's us picking our number?
Well, that's the number that we're going to have to give evidence for why we think that should be that number. And certainly, they already have both McKibben reports. And I think that I'm going to look for other ways of providing evidence, and maybe what might be included is if Dr. McKibben could do another report toward August as to where we are. Because all these things have their ripple effect going, going forward.
Well, you know, so they, we put in our numbers, then they come back to us, then they say, no, your projections are wrong. Then we remind them that, no, 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 no.
We go show them the Thompson edition.
Let's remember what happened in Thompson. Let's remember, let's remember 2008, 9, 10. Yeah, yeah, and then it goes back and forth.
And it goes back and forth, and we're sitting there with them. Did you come to that meeting?
I can't, yeah, go back, no, no, no.
No, no, no.
But this is the first number. This is where we give them our first number.
Yeah, but then once it's certified, that's it. Then that's the size of the building.
So once we get to that next part, which says enrollment certification executed, that is the operative number going forward.
Okay.
And that is a really big deal.
So just to put it in timing, I checked on dates. So we have to have, that first one's got to be by September 6th.
Yeah.
The second one, where it's finalized, is December 5th this year.
Well, that's, that's between us and them. So they're, they're pushing that date, that 180-day-out thing. Once we submit, then we're back and forth with them between the 90th day and the 180th day.
Right, right. I'm saying that, yeah, but I'm saying that that's when, that's when it's finalized.
Yeah.
Or before.
Or before. But, but that's, that's the, I'm saying that's the window that we have to work out our numbers.
That's correct.
So we have 90 days to really get our act together on the number, and I think the school committee's role here is to really just kind of come, support the superintendent and make sure we get the right number, because then you get into the same situation we got into.
And work hard on the 14th.
And I just wanted to mention, this was something supposed to be under new agenda items for next time, but to say that we need to, next time, talk about what procedure we are going to do to solicit building committee members from the community and how we're going to evaluate that. So as Dr. Boddy mentioned, there may very well be community members who have the kind of expertise that we need, that we can't necessarily rely on the permanent town building to do them all. So, so we want to figure out how do we solicit those members and how do we make that decision? And then third, we need to talk about who on the school committee really wants to be on this committee, knowing that it's going to take six years. So I, so I'm not, I'm not, we don't discuss it now, just this is, this is what, one of the agenda items for the next meeting, and I know Mr. Carden had actually mentioned that this was a good thing to talk about for next meeting, and I think it is.
Agreed.
The town manager and I are meeting next week to talk about that topic.
As well, okay, great. Awesome.
Yeah, I was going to say, the legal procedure for appointing who, forming the committee is unclear.
Unclear, right.
We're looking into that.
Okay.
And I guess we need to negotiate what our role is going to be.
Right.
Obviously, we'll select our member, whether we select the parent or the superintendent selects the parent, or the town manager does, that's still.
So that's what we need to talk about, yeah. Okay, good. So we'll, Dr. Boddy and I will talk a little and.
I'm sorry, we're not discussing the who as much as we're.
We're not discussing.
Procedure.
We're going to talk about the procedure. Yeah, so hopefully we'll get clarity on that at our next meeting. Procedure. But if there is a school committee member who's really interested in being on this committee, I know I got some preliminary sense a few months ago, but, but you should let me know if you're really interested.
We'll do.
No, you shouldn't appoint somebody else. You should. All right.
Sounds good to me.
And I know we have something else to do for superintendent's report.
We do. This one is a fairly meaty one to do, but there's a couple of quick things. Speaking, talking about buildings, the Permanent Town Building Committee has selected for a designer for the Thompson addition. That is going to be HMFH. There were a couple of projects, but the, obviously, the knowledge of the building, since they built it, was a deciding factor. So we have, as part of a design proposal, you have to give a design. So we've already had a preliminary design. The architect, actually, there were two architects from HMFH, have met with Principal Donato and myself to get some other suggestions. So now they're going, they're taking a new draft. And so we've invited parents next, the first, June 1st, to come to an evening meeting. That's all been sent out to parents so that they can hear some of the issues and ask questions, see the design, get some feedback. And then Principal Donato is working on developing an advisory committee, which would be a small committee, which is what we did with Stratton, once the building part was turned over to Permanent Town Building, actually went to Capital, then to Permanent Town Building. But we kept an advisory committee. Turned out, it wasn't the same people that was originally on the building committee, and they're very different. And I've said this to some of the parents. With the Stratton project, there was a lot of work that had to be done in deciding what was parity. And that took surveys, focus groups, discussions, and that was handled by the building committee. We don't need a building committee for Thompson in that sense because it's an addition and Permanent Town Building is going to do it. What we need is some, a small committee to be advisory along the way when, you know, some issues come up that Permanent Town Building would not address, or would prefer not to, in fact. And I'm sure the, as their pile of work grows, they'll be just as happy to have some taken off.
Will you have Ms. Donato filling the similar role that Mr. Hannah does during this?
Mr. Hayner?
Mr. Hannah.
Mr. Hannah, yes, she'll be on it.
Mr. Hannah's going to be there, but that's, I mean, yeah, I find, I personally find him really an important person, being the asking data. When members of the Permanent Town Building Committee ask an educational or question about the building, he's right there and he's been very good with that. So I see Ms. Donato doing a similar thing.
Yes, she's prepared to do that.
Great, thank you.
So that's going, and you're all will be welcome. I'll send by email the time. So then that will be the meeting, and then there'll be a follow-up meeting later in June, coming back to the smaller committee now to show them what the design is. Because our situation with Thompson is this, assuming a positive vote in June on the override, we need to be ready to go out to bid by the end of August, early September. The process for choosing the designer took longer than people anticipated. So we're a little behind schedule. This process was supposed to have started a couple of weeks ago. It's just the way it is. And so we're under the gun. They, we have to have the final design ready, that everybody agreed about the design's going to be by the end of June so they can now do the next piece, the schematics and all, and get the bid documents ready and all of that for the, for early, early September. And then we have to have a special town meeting if we have a successful override to appropriate the money. And once the money is appropriated, then we can actually award the bids and get going. But we need to be able to get going no later than November 1st. That's even pushing it. We'd better have a little bit earlier. So we're on a tight timeframe there too. And so there's a lot going on, on that, on that one. I mean, that alone, if we, you think about it, that alone could have been just the work of next year, but we've got all of these going on simultaneously. All right. So the last thing I want to bring up, and by the way, one last, the art show tonight, you heard the art here, but the art show at the town hall the last couple of weeks has been fantastic. So kudos to all of our art teachers and to Director Ardito because it's, it's just been superb. And I really like the fact of how public these exhibits are, so the people come out. Apparently, I got there late, so did Mr. Spiegel, but we got there at 11:00, 5:30, and there already had been, he said, a good thing you came now because it was packed. So a lot of people came out. All right. So every, every other year, we do a youth risk behavior survey, and the middle school and the high school have been in alternate years. The middle school one from last year is on our website. And we will be putting on our website tomorrow the full report, but I wanted to discuss it this evening first before we actually just put it on, on the website. And you, what you have here, and this is from Ivy LaPlante, she, well, actually, she is our conduit to the person who actually does the analysis. She doesn't do it. We, we hire someone to do a full analysis every, every time we do this survey and to find, and to look at what the trends are in different categories. And, you know, I'm not going to go through every single category. First of all, on personal safety and violence, which is having fights or drinking alcohol, there's really pretty much the same. Now, I'm not saying that the same is good, I'm just saying that it's been pretty much the same from the one in 2013. One that's a little concerning in that, though, still remains that 14% of students report they have ever been verbally or emotionally abused by someone they dated. It was 15% in 2013, so we're not seeing that budge, even though we've done programs and talked about it in different, different forums within the school, and there's certainly the leadership councils, and it just, there's been a lot of ways we've addressed this, but it's a stubborn number, and that's really concerning. That's a, I think that's a big percentage. So it's a, it's a, it's a call for some more action for sure. But I think the one that I want to talk a little bit most about tonight is the social and emotional health, because I see some trends here that are concerning. And to your question, Mr. Hayner, about the courses students are taking, is that the source of stress? I think what we'd love to be able to get down in here a little bit more deeply into this is what is the source of stress? Because, so 41% of our students report feeling that they are under too much stress. That's almost, 41% is a very high percentage, and in the previous two surveys, we were in the 30s, and we thought those were high. So we're seeing, we're seeing an escalation, and I think that that's something that we need to look at. We really need to focus on advising kids to get a better, if it's really courses, get a better balance of AP and honors. There's a certain amount, level of work in those courses you can't reduce because then you've lost the rigor of the course. So what we need to do is to have it be a more balanced portfolio of courses that they take. But I'm not sure that's the entire reason either, and we're focusing on that, but I'm not sure that's it.
Would it be worth having a more in-depth survey, investigation? I think that whatever the cost of that is definitely beneficial to find out rather than try to, no offense, I don't mean to guess or assume that it's AP or homework. I mean, the students responded to homework, some responded to parental pressure. It can be a combination. I think it's so important to find out, and whatever it takes to find it out, and I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think it's something we need to do.
Yeah. Dr. Osanti?
I wanted to chime in on what Mr. Hayner's saying, that, you know, some of it may be stress because homework assignments are unclear, or, you know, it may not just be fulfilling the obligations, it may be stuff which could be easily changed, and it would be helpful to find that out.
Ms. Starks?
I just also wonder, I mean, what do kids, what else do they have to be stressed about? Of course, if you ask me if I'm stressed, and the things I have are school and my parents, yes, they stress me out. But what else? I mean, I don't, like, I guess my, part of my problem with the question always is, of course, school stresses them out, but stress is not always bad, right? So stress is also something that's a motivator, and stress is something that makes us do stuff. And, you know, so I have a hard time teasing out when kids say, I'm stressed about school. I'm like, okay, yes. You know what? You should be, that's part of your job. My job stresses me too. But I want to be working, that's, that's what I'm supposed to be doing. And that should give me some stress. But I want to know, I would like us to figure out if it's an unhealthy stress, if it's a, you know, like, I, I feel like, you know, like when we first started talking about bullying and all of a sudden, everything was bullying, and then we went, no, 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 let's define it. So I really want to have a discussion about stress because of course they're stressed about school. It's one of the things they do, it's part of their job. So, and not saying that it's not important, it absolutely is, and the fact that the number's on the rise, they're more aware of it. Yes, that is something that gives them stress. But I don't know, I want to understand better how badly that stress is. You know, that, I guess that's something I wish we could tease out of this a little bit more.
Ms. Hayner?
Next element down. Had a minor tick up. I agree with Ms. Starks, it's important for us to know. I agree with Ms. Starks. It's important for us to know. But you and I can have the same elements of causing stress. You're able to deal with it with support and stuff outside of the school. I may not have that support at home. So, once we find out where it is, what can we do to help? You say, "I'm fine. I got my mom and dad." I got whatever.
Right, right.
I got nothing. So we need to find out what it is and where it is.
Right.
But that last, next element down scares the living daylights out of them.
Because you look at the next percentages under this issue of stress. 58% is due to homework or academic school day. 26% high parental expectations. Now, if you just assumed those are the only two, we're still missing a chunk, you know, what it is. So that's an issue.
Do we know what they were in previous years, or were they not broken down that way?
They wasn't broken down that way. But when you get down to, you get 10% of our students feeling hopeless or discouraged. I don't have a comparison. But in the next one, we're talking about self-esteem and fitting in. 16% worry that they are not good at anything most of the time or always. That's up from 12%.
It's one out of six.
That's concerning. That is very concerning. And it was up from 10% the year before, the survey before.
Do we know what the margin of error is on these surveys from year to year?
I don't know, but that's a very good question.
Yeah, I'd like to know that.
Well, you just do a statistical amount. They should have a number. There should be a number.
One of the things that, this may be, well, I'm going to find that out for you, but also, one of the things I wanted you to be aware of is that the middle sex superintendents, we've now coalesced as a group, one of the things we're thinking about doing is getting our districts on the same cycle so that when you see these, you can compare to what your responses are before. And they also, you can get it compared to the state. But it would be very interesting for us to be looking at our contiguous peer communities to see, you know, where we are relative to that. So that might mean that next year, because we're off-cycle. But we're going to talk about who's the most off-cycle because maybe they're the community that we'll get back in. But we may have to do this again. And we also may think about whether we do shorter versions. I've talked with Ivy LaPlante, and they're working, there's a shorter version out. But these are all questions that we're, be looking at. But at any rate, if you go down to the next one, this is also a trend that it seems pretty stable. It was self-harm, 19% report hurting themselves on purpose. That's just huge in my mind. And I have to say that, yes, we are seeing that. I mean, that we have evidence of that from our nurses, but it remains somewhat stubborn from the last couple of years. But that's, that's pretty high. We're seeing a sort of uptake from 13 on seriously considered attempting suicide. I mean, 14% is a lot of students to be thinking about that. But again, it's staying pretty much the same since 2011. So the kind of conversations we've been having about stress and creating even more positive social, social, emotional cultures in our building is something that we've recognized. It's something that we have, a committee that's going to do it, a grant to help us fund some of the work this summer. But we have seen this, and we've talked about it at this table. The, and I would like to be able to say it was only high school, but it is not. And we've had, we've even had students at the elementary level have to go to the hospital in an ambulance for anxiety. So, you know, this is something that's very serious, and we're taking it very seriously and looking at all that we can do. But to your point, there's a certain level of stress that's in schools. I mean, that exists. But how do we get, help our children learn how to cope and put all of that in perspective? That's really the, that's really the skills we need to teach.
So actually, you've talked about that there is going to be sort of a major initiative to look at this. Can you just say a little bit more about what the plan is in the coming year?
Pull you into this because we're working, we have a committee.
It'd be helpful for the public to know.
Dr. Chessen was part of the writing of the grant.
Right, so there will be a committee that will look at this for about four or five days this summer. There are a number of instruments that Allison Elmer, who is the special education director, has used in her prior district to build sort of a profile of where your strengths and your challenges are. And there's a consultant that she's worked with before that she feels would be very helpful to work in this process. And from out of that, there will be a planning, you know, they will do that, begin that work this summer. They will do that work all this year, and it's our hope that we will have a plan that we will be able to go forward with to help get additional funding to, you know, work up over, say, the next three years on this issue. And that doesn't mean that things are going to wait three years, but that we want to do it very thoughtfully. And we're looking for a really cohesive K through 12 plan.
Great, thanks. So some good news in this, the number of students that are, that have never tried a cigarette is growing to 87%, Ms. Bouvier will be, and the Sanborn Foundation will be very happy on that, on that effort. And 92% have not smoked. The number of students with alcohol use is, again, remaining sort of stubborn on that. But on the other hand, if you look at it, 42% of our students have never, never had a sip of alcohol. That's pretty good. On the other hand, there are students that are having more than five drinks in a row, and those are issues we have to look at, too. The marijuana use is still remaining somewhat steady. It's 68% have never used it, but that means that over 30% are using it. And it's, and we, and then we have 97% of students report never having used heroin. But that means 3% might be. I don't know how to really, if that's really true. That is, I know. Now, another statistic in this, I think, is worth mentioning is that 13% of our students report being gay, lesbian, bisexual, or uncertain about their sexuality. And that is a fairly large percentage that have students that are dealing with these issues. And by the way, I wanted to say publicly that the issue that is being discussed a lot about bathrooms and transgender and locker rooms, it's just a non-issue here. It has been for a while. It's not at all an issue. So anyway, those are the main points. And as you look over this survey, if there's things that you would like to know more about, I think we could bring in, you know, some, some people who are very close to some of these areas.
Do you feel that you need a motion to go forward to investigate in depth the area, the stress area? Okay.
That'd definitely be part of that committee's work this summer.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you.
Right. So we will release this, and we will also, we'll get the summary out, and we'll get the actual results on the website tomorrow.
So, since of the committee, is there, do we want somebody to come in and talk to us in great detail about this?
No.
I would like to know that element, that piece of the results and stuff when we get in there, and what sort of action you plan on taking.
For the summer work.
Yeah.
Yes, there will be a report at the end of the summer.
In the summer, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Dr. Alzampe?
This isn't, I know this survey is packaged already, so I don't know if we can add anything. But one thing, as we've seen these surveys over the years, I wish sometimes that we knew is what day of the week are kids doing some of this stuff? I mean, the ones who do drink or who do smoke or whatever.
Weekend versus weekend.
Yeah, exactly. Is it weekend? Is it the middle of the week? Because partly, as you're trying to develop some sort of alternative for the kids, it'd be helpful to know what days are we targeting. I mean, yes, most likely it's the weekend, but it'd be helpful to know that. And if it wasn't, then that suggests other answers.
I wanted to add, I know that in the past, we've seen a breakdown by gender. And I know, I know that certain things like self-harm are higher for girls and for boys and...
Well, the complete, this is just a summary.
Okay, that's available to the public or...
Oh, yeah, I'm going to put everything on the website.
Everything, okay. I know that some of these things are broken down by different sexes have different things.
Okay, and that was it, other than telling you where our kindergarten numbers are.
Yes. So no one else can move in over the summer?
Well, we're happy to have them.
I'm a mad woman.
We're happy to have them.
Yeah.
All right, that's it, my report tonight.
Okay, great, thanks. So moving on to the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Approval warrant, warrant number 16169. Total warrant amount, 624,191 and 95 cents, dated May 12th, 2016. Approval of minutes, special school committee meeting Monday, May 9th, 2016, and regular school committee meeting, May 12th, 2016.
Move.
Dr. Alzampe?
Pull the May 12th minutes, please.
Okay, pull the May 12th minutes. Anything else? Okay, so all those in favor approving the ones not pulled?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. So May 12th. May 12th is what you wanted?
I need abstain.
Yes, okay, so...
Move to approve the regular school committee minutes for May 12th, 2016.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Hanner, second by Mr. Thielman. All those in favor?
Aye.
And aye. Opposed and abstentions.
Aye.
Dr. Alzampe is abstaining. Okay, subcommittee and liaison reports. Budget. Dr. Alzampe?
Budget doesn't have anything to report at this point, do it.
Okay. Community relations. Ms. Starks?
We have a meeting planned on Tuesday, the 31st, from 4:30 to 6:00 up here. We have three items on our agenda. The calendar survey, the dashboard, and future forums.
District accountability, curriculum instruction, and assessment.
We met yesterday. If you want longer, I'll tell you who we met with. We met with the Subcommittee on Cultural Competency of the Superintendent's Diversity Advisory Committee. And we discussed the presentation that they made last week, and we came up with a motion, excuse me, motion asking that we weave into the superintendent's goals with regard to cultural competency, that we weave in assessing our current situation and develop a need statement, plan for the future, make it visible on the website. I think that, once we got into a conversation, talking what we were actually doing in the district, they were impressed, but we're not communicating that well, and they didn't know this was happening. So I think by communicating this and making it visible, they make the case that people will respond positively to us and think that we're doing great and wonderful things for all of our children in this district. We'll be meeting again before our next meeting. We'll put out a doodle probably tomorrow.
Right, just a reminder, we have the, the goals that we've looked at first read, and then we hope to get a second read in the next meeting. Yes. For facilities, Mr. Thielman?
No report.
Okay. Policies and procedures, Mr. Hanner?
We met on May 19th and came up with a beginning list of policies to look at from us, from committee members. We also had a community member come in and talk about a policy on recycling, and we're going to look at that again. And a parent came in and asked us to look, seek clarification on our current homework policy. We will be meeting again on May 31st at 6:00 P.M.
Excellent. So actually, Mr. Hanner, was, is there something we need to do tonight about the recycling?
There was a request from the person to ask, to get a consensus from us and have the chair, correct me if I'm wrong, send a letter of support on the concept of recycling. It would have no bearing. What she needs, she needs it, she needs letters of support from different committees, school committee being one, that recycling is a good thing to do. It has no bearing on our policy or commitment to us to...
Okay.
It's a good thing to do, and we support doing this.
Okay, okay, so I can do that. Okay.
Should we have a motion to ask the chair to write the letter?
Sure, have a motion. Motion by Mr. Shifkin.
Okay.
Seconded by Mr. Hanner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, write that letter. So, school enrollment task force, I guess we are done. We can cross that one off, right? Or, no, we can't. It's still there. No, I'm sorry, we're not done. We're just taking a hiatus. I'm sorry, yes, we are taking a hiatus. Warrant committee.
Everybody get paid.
Any school liaison reports?
No.
Nope, okay. Any announcements? Mr. Hanner?
I'd like to announce one more time that there will be a Memorial Day program at the town hall at 9 o'clock on Monday. There will be a speaker. And from there, we will go over to the cemetery at the different areas, commemorating service people from the Civil War. And at the very end of that, will be a ceremony dedicating an area for those that have passed away on war and terrorism from 1990 to the current. And there will be no parade from Walgreens this year. It'll be, once the program is done at the town hall, we will parade down to the cemetery. Thank you.
Thanks. I'd also like to mention that there's a Rotary Dinner on Monday, the 13th, where Mr. Hanner is one of the people who is going to be honored.
Thank you.
Anything else? Announcements, okay. Future agenda items. We've mentioned one, but Mr. Carden had another one that he had mentioned. Do you want to...
Yes, so the other item was taking a look at the buffer zones. The buffer zone policy actually does say that on an occasional basis, the superintendent will take a look at the buffer zones and recommend adjustments that may be necessary. As we're seeing with the kindergarten numbers in East Arlington, you know, they're getting so high that you might not even be able to accommodate them with eight classes in East Arlington. So clearly, that's one area where there's, there's just no flexibility for you to, to address that. So I think it's a good time to take a look at where the buffer zones are, where they're working, where they're not working. There may be areas such as the current, you know, the part, the part along Spy Pond that is a Bishop Thompson buffer zone that doesn't make any sense anymore because, because none of those people are going to be able to go to Thompson, clearly. And then there are other parts where, like in East Arlington, where maybe we can expand the buffer zone to allow for more flexibility. And so if we could get something, you know, maybe in the fall as a timeframe, I don't think that type of adjustment requires a redistricting committee or anything like that. Certainly, we need public input. We need to let people know that we're thinking about moving the lines, if that's your recommendation. But I do think it's something that we should be looking at. It's been, you know, four or five years since we've, we set those zones.
So our next meeting, we'll have a short discussion about how we think we'd like to handle it for the coming year. And, but it sounds like the process wouldn't begin until the fall. But let's have a quick discussion about how, how we want to handle it. Yes, Mr. Thielman?
So if the debt exclusion is successful, I think at some point, I don't know if it's an agenda item from next week, but we've got to have a discussion about how we're going to get, what the process for the Gibbs is going to look like, how we're going to get community input in that, how that's going to work. And I know we have the Thompson Arlington High School. And so, but anyway, it's a, it's a future agenda item. It may not be next week. It may not even be till the fall. I don't know, but I just want to make sure we don't lose sight of that.
That's great. Thanks for suggesting that. My gut is that the fall would be better, but that's my gut.
So finally, I just want to put it out there.
But that's, thanks for suggesting that. Mr. Hanner?
Since policy is meeting before our next meeting, should we look at the buffer zone thing, or should we wait till the 9th and decide the procedure?
So I think potentially that we're thinking about just having a brief discussion on the 9th, but...
We need math before we can, we need numbers.
I'm not looking to add any more to the table.
How it's going to happen. Does it go to one committee? Do we form another committee? Just have a brief discussion of how we're going to do it.
If you want to take the buffer zone thing, I think you should.
Not yet, not yet. I just don't want to come back on the 9th and say, "Bill, we thought you did it."
No, no, let's have, let's have a brief discussion next meeting of how we want to accomplish this.
The whole redistricting.
We'll do it in a half hour, redistrict the town.
Okay, executive session, that's what... So... Okay, executive session, that's what, so we are going into executive session-
Yep.
-and we won't be returning from executive session. Purpose of executive session is to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union and/or non-union personnel, or contract negotiations with union and/or non-union, in which, if held in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect, to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, in which, if held in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect. Collective bargaining may also be discussed, to discuss Arlington Education Associated Unit C negotiations, and to vote to approve the following executive session meetings. Those are the two specific things we're going to be discussing. One on Thursday, January 8th, 2015, Thursday, January 2nd, 2015, Thursday, February 12th,